Welcome to the District 150 Board of Education meeting for November the ninth. And I apologize for us being a little late, but I would like to call the Peoria Public School District 150 Board of Education meeting for November ninth, two thousand and fifteen to order. Secretary, will you please call the row?
Mrs. Butler?
Here.
Mr. Corwin?
Here.
Mrs. Pasquet?
You.
Mrs. Jackson?
Here.
Mrs. Watanen?
Here.
Mr. Adler?
Here.
Mrs. Ross?
Here. Please stand and join me for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, undegraded, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next, we have community recognition. Who's doing that? Are you? Junior achievement? Okay, thank you.
Tonight, our Community Contribution Award recognizes Junior Achievement. Junior Achievement provides our schools volunteer-delivered kindergarten through twelfth-grade programs that foster work readiness, entrepreneurship, and financial literacy skills, and use experiential learning to inspire students to dream big and reach their potential. With the help of local volunteers, JA students develop the skills they need to experience the realities and opportunities of work and entrepreneurship in the twentieth-century global marketplace. President of Junior Achievement of Central Illinois, Mary Peel, is that correct, is here tonight to provide more information about this great resource and partner for our schools. Would you please come to the podium? Thank you.
Is this on? Yep, I think so. Well, first of all, we just want to say on behalf of the staff and our Board of Directors that we'd like to thank, the District 150 School Board and your staff for the recognition tonight. Believe it or not, Junior Achievement of Central Illinois has been a proud partner with Peoria Public Schools for nearly seventy years. Each year for the past ten years, approximately four thousand students in the district have participated in Junior Achievement programs. In the same timeframe, hundreds of community volunteers have connected with and mentored students through Junior Achievement. What an impact on the future of these students. Each year, JA volunteers teach a variety of age-appropriate programs aligning with learning standards and objectives for grades K through twelve at participating schools. Program content focuses on financial literacy, work readiness, and entrepreneurship. Volunteers teach through a series of experiential hands-on activities, and all materials and training are provided. Our mission is simple: to inspire and prepare today's young people to succeed in a global economy. But we couldn't do it without the generosity and dedication of our whole community. During the past school year, thirty-six area Peoria businesses and organizations provided nearly a hundred and sixty volunteers for JA programs in sixteen District 150 schools. The impact of the volunteers' time resulted in twenty thousand four hundred and seventy-eight contact hours with students, all at no cost to the district. Junior Achievement partners with community businesses and individuals to financially support JA in the classroom. From high school students learning about the impact of supply and demand on the economy, to middle school students learning how to map a path to employment goals, to elementary students exploring ways people earn money to provide for families' needs and wants, JA is making a difference in the lives of Peoria Public School children. Research shows that children who participate in JA programs consistently demonstrate significantly higher critical thinking skills and problem-solving skills than their counterparts, and are better prepared to develop successful financial management habits crucial to empowering for their own economic success. To further demonstrate our commitment to our partnership with District 150, we are also collaborating with the Make Yourself Inspire Initiative by providing assistance in the successful implementation of the program. JA programs are a proven foundational platform to support work and career readiness for youth as they explore different careers. We look forward to our continued partnership with District 150 and to further exploring ways that we can strategically collaborate to increase our impact on students together. Once again, on behalf of the staff and our JA Board of Directors, we want to thank you for this recognition, and also like to recognize our team that's here tonight as well. If you guys could stand. These are the ones who make JA happen in the classroom, so they work hand-in-hand with the teachers, so we really appreciate it. So, thank you.
On behalf of the -- oh, she's already there. On behalf of the Board of Education, Dr. Karadis, as a token of our appreciation for what you do for our students and families in our district, we appreciate the work that you do.
Thank you so much. We appreciate the opportunity. Thank you.
You bet.
Thank you, JA, for the many, 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 many years of collaboration. This point, we will recognize our schools for great attendance this month. Last month, we recognized the top three schools in proven attendance from August to September, and we compared last year's data with this year's data. So tonight, we're going to do the same thing. We are going to -- we're looking at October's attendance rates. And just some key highlights: eighteen out of our twenty-seven schools have increased attendance when comparing two thousand and fifteen to two thousand and fourteen for October's attendance. So tonight, we would like to recognize the top three improvements for the month of October. In third place, increasing attendance by two point thirty-six percent is Glen Oak Community Learning Center. In two thousand and fourteen, Glen Oak had ninety-one percent attendance rates in October. Compared to this October, it is ninety-three point six this October. So, good job, Glen Oak. Ms. Branscombe, please stand, and her team, all the Glen Oak folks. Thank you, Ms. Ross. Mo, thank you. Thanks for staying focused on your attendance plan and implementing it and working it. It's working out, right? From ninety-one to really ninety-four percent. That's amazing, so keep it up. In second place, increasing attendance by three point seven seven is Woodya Primary School. Last year's Woodya's attendance was ninety point nine attendance rate, and this year it's increased to ninety-four point six nine, so really ninety-five percent. This is amazing. So, way to go Wildcats. Woodya, Mrs. Sell? Mrs. Sell's is -- Woodya, any representation? Any staff from Woodya Primary? Do we have any staff from Woodya Primary? Okay. Ms. Branscombe, you can call them, and congrats, congratulating. And then, our largest increase in attendance during the month of October is Peoria High School. The Lions jumped from eighty point nine, eighty-one percent in October last year to eighty-six percent this year, so a four point seven nine. This is amazing. So, way to go Wildcats. Woodya, Mrs. Sell? Mrs. Sell's is -- Woodya, any representation? Any staff from Woodya Primary? Do we have any staff from Woodya Primary? Okay. Ms. Branscombe, you can call them, and congrats, congratulating. And then, our largest increase in attendance during the month of October is Peoria High School. The Lions jumped from eighty point nine, eighty-one percent in October last year to eighty-six percent this year, so a four point seven nine. This is amazing. So, Mr. Elliott and all of the teachers, this is, let's keep it up. This is what a five percent increase is really unheard of. So, all of Peoria High folks, can you please stand? Thank you. So, Peoria High gets a banner to proudly display at the school, and we hope that this will continue to encourage our young people to continue to come to school every day on time. That's very, very important. It's actually the first piece when we talk about student improvement, student growth, school reform, we have to get them. And I know you're working really hard. Can you come up, please, and make a few remarks? And then, congrats also to Peoria High in that great win. It was painful, but it was beautiful. Good job. You're welcome.
Thank you, yes. Peoria High Lions football will be in the Elite Eight for the second year in a row, so let's give the Lions football a little love. Yeah, that's right. I would like to say a few things, first about the attendance. As a principal, we get to stand up here in big knowledge, but really, it's the work of the students, the teachers and the staff who are making this possible. The students are truly buying in to our new Peoria High Pilot Attendance Plan. The teachers are going above and beyond with their parent contacts, having their conversations in our advisory period, and we have a phenomenal, two phenomenal homeschool facilitators, Ken Banks and Steve Turner, who are going above and beyond with the home visits, making the contacts, updating our list, getting our updated attendance to every teacher to be posted outside of every room every week. Our new PPO, Parent Organization, has put together monthly celebrations for our attendance as well, so they're on board, so we're very proud of our progress at Peoria High School. While I'm up here, I would like to acknowledge a couple of quick things. I did, we just attended a GL Turn Conference last week, and for the first time, I've attended about thirteen of these, and this conference is about true school board, central administration, union, and teacher collaboration. And for the first time, at the same table, we had our Board President, Ms. Ross, we had Ms. Jackson, Board Member, we had Dr. Bell, Central Administration, we had Lana Meyer, Union Vice President, we had building reps, teachers, building administration, all at the same table having conversations about how to move District 150. So, I think that deserves a huge round of applause for the efforts. And a final thought, I'd like to thank Mr. Adler as well. He's stepped up, and he's been working with our science teachers and Dave Meyer to get our irrigation system and our greenhouse up and running so we can take full advantage of that. So, thank you, Mr. Adler.
Okay, I'm gonna, I'm gonna change the agenda slightly. Is, is Mr. Leahy here?
Yes.
Oh, okay. Mr. Leahy is, has indicated that he has a very, very tight schedule, and so we have a long, little long meeting. So, we're gonna move under information items. Number one, Illinois Association of School Board presentation for superintendent contract.
Madam President, I would motion that we table this item. I need more information, so I motion that we table this item.
For the presentation or the, it's down on the agenda as well. Where we would be voting on that, it's in a different spot. We're not voting at this time.
We're not voting, okay.
Presentation.
I'll wait till the presentation.
All right, so, Mr. Leahy.
Should I be here? Is this fine to stand here?
That's fine.
Can I use this mic? Your name's your own.
Mrs. Ross, thank you very much for the opportunity to come and visit with you, and also especially for your adjustment in the schedule. I appreciate that. I'm going to an area district by eight o'clock to talk with them as well. But what you're receiving right now is a packet of material. We provide superintendent search process through the Illinois Association of School Boards, and on the left side of that packet is some information about us. It has our department, Donna Johnson, myself, Dave Love, we have other consultants with us as well. It also has a reference to the National Affiliation of Superintendent Searchers, which I'm a past chair of. You'll see that as well in here. But I want you to take a look at that and consider that IASB now has a national reach and the state of Illinois. Our main task, of course, is to find the best match for a district if you choose to have us, and by match, its matches. We have numbers of candidates in range from twenties to eighty in districts right now in Illinois, and I want to share with you that the boards then ask of us to screen those candidates down to six to eight, and then also present those to the board for interviews. So, that's our task, is to find the best match possible for you. If you have internal candidates, we take that, of course, into consideration with the board as to your preferences here. With that, I just wanted to share with you that also on the left is an example in the board packets. And by the way, I have some extra packets, if I may pass to Mr. Rettberg, if I may. These are as a matter of record for the district, and I'll give Ms. Dixon one, too. I'll take one to her. All right. So, with that, I just want to make sure that I've passed out the material, so you have it as a matter of record. Thank you. There are examples in the board packets, in board members' packets, of brochures that we developed throughout this process. We believe that it's important that you get community and staff input on this particular part. We want you to be open to your community and staff in the sense that they will help you to identify the characteristics of a superintendent. What would you want them to have? And we believe that's important. That is part of the process. With that, on the right side of the brochure, of the folder, you'll find a letter of proposal. You'll notice that it has information in it in regard to the basic search, and it also has options. We are recommending several, and if the young man, he's not here right, there he is. Would you pass out these? Okay, sorry, thanks. His name is Chris, right? You're a go guy, aren't you? What Chris is passing out, and I'm doing this as a matter of time because I know my time needs to be limited for you guys as well. This is a summary of the services that we offer. That summary has recommendations in it. The full search for a basic piece, the cost is ten thousand dollars for the size of your system of near fourteen thousand students. We will provide all things necessary, including the consultants with you and other staff. We would also work with a timeline, and there is one on the right side of your folder as suggested. If you approve our search firm in November, we would go ahead and advertise on our website, the IASA Job Bank. We would send our constant contact distribution to approximately sixty-five hundred individuals who have asked to see them. We would also do it through the National Affiliation. Once that occurs, we would set a timeline with you and also a deadline to apply. That needs done after the online survey would be conducted. There's an additional fee for that piece. You'll see it on the bottom, toward the bottom. Staff and community interviews, we'd have two staff come into your district for at least one day and do that work with you through the early morning through evening for staff input and community input. We would also then have two consultants personally interview the screened-down number. So, if you had forty or fifty applicants, we would by paper screening independently reduce that number to approximately twenty, and then reduce it again maybe to twelve or fifteen. We would interview them personally to find out and look them in the eye and say, why would you want to be at Peoria 150? What strengths do you have and that sort of thing? We would then screen it to a group of six to eight and recommend those for you to interview. We would conduct a mock interview training with your board. We have a staff of members who can do so, they research the district as if they were a candidate, come in and interview with you in closed session. Same night that we would present candidates to you, and then we critique that and give you help with that. We would also facilitate the final round of interviews with your final two or three candidates. If you did it the same evening as your final board interviews, we would be here and facilitate that with groups of community and staff that you desire to have involved in that process. Full well-knowing, it's the Board of Seven's job to hire the superintendent, but the staff and community could have further input. and community could have further input. Those costs totaled ninety-two-hundred-and-fifty. We have discounted, due to the size of Peoria and the fee at the beginning, a fifty percent discount from that particular cost. Our fee would be fourteen thousand, six hundred and twenty-five dollars, all-inclusive. We would not add expenses. We would stay with you throughout the entire process. If this search did not reap the result that you wanted, we could restart and come back with an entire new pool and stay with you through the finish without additional cost. That's our guarantee in a sense. And you're a member of, of our association, of course, so we're able to do that in that way. So, with that, we want to be with you from the beginning through the end. We want to help you find the best candidates to interview and the best superintendent for your system. So, Mrs. Ross, I would try to answer questions if board has that and go from there.
Any board members have any questions of Mr. Leahy? So, I think you've given us a comprehensive view of everything. And if there are no questions, you must have done a good job.
We'll see how that, we'll see. I will share with you that also on the right side of the folder is a one-page resume of mine. I should have mentioned earlier, I've been a teacher six and a half years and a superintendent for fourteen years. Retired from Quincy Public Schools some years ago, and I've been doing this now as my eighth year as a consultant with IASB. Peoria reminds me somewhat of Quincy in the sense that we have strong athletics as well, strong music programs as well, with Peoria being about twice the size of what I encountered there. So, thank you again for the opportu, I'm sorry. Yes.
Mr. Coy has indicated he has a question.
Yes, sir.
Yes, thank you. Just in terms of the types of search you've, searches you've conducted, this is a fairly large district relative to others. I think we're the fourteenth largest in the state. Have you conducted searches for districts of approximately our size?
No, I have not. The largest I have approximately to yours is six thousand, five or six thousand. It was Kankakee's system. But I can also tell you, I've been a member of Luded, the Large Unit District Association. Have talked with folks there, have, we've worked with other districts. I know that you have some work going on with IASB staff in Sandro Quasa, and we will include some of her work and our work with you. I want you to know that our staff will learn of Peoria 150 and make sure that we match the people to you.
Thank you.
Other questions or comments? Thank you, Mr. Leahy.
Thanks so much. Timeline, do you know, depends on what your choice is as far as tabling and that sort of thing. So, I put contract, Mrs. Ross, in the folder of yours.
I see.
And I also wrote my cell number down, and I answer that, as you know, anytime. So, thank you so much.
Thank you. Okay. Thank you for allowing us to go get off schedule here.
Thanks now, you guys.
All right. Thank you. Safe travels. Announcements. Oh, oh, gotta go back up. Okay. Peoria's Finest Teacher.
Good evening. Peoria's Finest Teacher is a monthly recognition that we are sponsoring for those members of PFT that go above and beyond, exemplify best practices in teaching, and will reach out to the community and parents to be involved in our schools. The teachers in this district work so hard to serve the children and families of Peoria each day, and we want to showcase this positive effort. We want to thank our winner's principal, Ms. Branscombe, and any faculty, friends and family that are here in support of this month's winner. Our nominators of this month's winner are David Del Pozo and Tagwana Webster, if you'll come up, both of you. And this month's Peoria's Finest Teacher is Rosa Lopez at Glen Oak. Come on up, Rosa. Congratulations.
We would like to do this a little bit different this time, because since a bilingual teacher, we thought it would be a great idea if I would read her recognition in Spanish, and then Ms. Webster's gonna read it on whatever language she chooses. And we might do a little quiz in Spanish at the end. Rosa is una de las mejores maestras que conocemos y con las que hemos trabajado. La señora Lopez hace mucho más que lo que la piden para asegurarse de que los estudiantes, sus familias y la comunidad hispana van mejor que lo mejor posible, no solo en la escuela sino también en la vida. Ella se preocupa realmente por sus estudiantes y sus familias y de algún modo, año tras año es capaz de mover a la mayoría de sus estudiantes de necesitar mejorar y estar en color rojo a reunir o sobrepasar las expectativas y estar de color verde. Ella se merece el premio a la maestra del mes.
My turn, so you can understand. Rosa is one of the finest teachers we know, and have worked with Mrs. Lopez, goes above and beyond her duties. She's trying to ensure that all of her students, their families and the Hispanic community do their best, not only at school, but also in life. She genuinely cares about the students and their families, and somehow, year after year, she's able to move the majority of her students from red to green. She is a deserving of the Teacher of the Month Award. Mrs. Lopez is instrumental in helping the Hispanic community in and out of school. She has consistently taught two grade levels without complaint due to her dedication to our students' success. Mrs. Lopez volunteered at the Peoria Public Library for many years to teach ESL to adults. Now she can be found giving private ESL lessons to parents who reach out to her. This past summer, she helped develop and coordinate a successful bilingual summer school program, and Rosa Lopez is an active member of the Peoria District 150 Bilingual Parent Council. We're excited to nominate her, and we're happy that she won. This is Mrs. Rosa Lopez.
Thank you for this recognition. It's truly an honor. This would not be possible with the support of my bilingual and Leno colleagues, as well as my outstanding Glen Oak administrators, and last but not least, the children I love to work on a daily basis with. Thank you.
On behalf of the District 150 School Board, congratulations to you, Ms. Lopez.
Muy bueno. Actually, we worked together at Whittier. I hired Ms. Lopez, and Ms. Lopez is Alex, is he in ninth grade now?
Ten.
Tenth? Okay. And Alex's son went to Whittier Primary while we were there. So, we spent really, she's an amazing teacher and really hard worker. So, again, congratulations. So, now, I am, actually, I would like to present Mr. Josh Collins, our Director of Transportation, to recognize an employee who has, from his department, who has gone above and beyond, specifically when it comes to acting rather quickly, and he'll tell a little bit more about it. Mr. Collins, thanks to you and the drivers and monitors for their outstanding work every day in keeping the focus every day on our four hundred and sixteen daily bus routes. Again, thanks to you and Ms. Easley, who's here with us tonight, for joining us tonight. So, why don't we, Ms., where's Josh? Are you here?
Yes.
Yeah, awesome. Can you, can you come up, please? And I like this guy, 'cause he takes a lot of hits, right? And he gets a beat in, but he always takes the adjustments with a smile and recommendations with a smile. So, I really appreciate working with you. And so, yeah, you're a good man.
Thanks for being here.
Thank you. Thank you. I appreciate that very much. I'll be very brief, right to the point. Again, I want to take some time to recognize, excuse me, Christine Easley. She is one of our monitors, this lovely young lady sitting over here near me. I feel we should recognize Christine Easley for her actions during Woodruff-Wilson Route on Bus 88. On the afternoon of number, excuse me, November 5th, 2015, the driver was experiencing a medical emergency. Ms. Easley took immediate action. She first assisted the driver with directions, but once she realized something was seriously wrong, she guided the driver in stopping the bus, securing the vehicle and calling for help. She stayed calm and focused, knew exactly what needed to be done. She did all this and kept the fifty or so students onboard safe, calm and under control. So often, the monitor is overshadowed by all the focus being placed on the drivers. I believe this situation proves how valuable a great monitor can be. She assumed the responsibilities of maintaining safety on the bus, and in my opinion, saved her driver, her students, people in the general area, and herself from what could have been a very horrible situation. Ms. Easley has proven what we in the Transportation Department have already felt. She is an outstanding monitor and a tremendous asset to District 150. So, Chris handed this to me, so I'm assuming I'm supposed to give it to her. Would like to present Christine Easley with a certificate of appreciation from all of us. Thank you very much.
Announcements. I'll admit announcements, right?
I have one. Coming up on November 19th, Woodruff Career and Technical Center will host the Last Parent University of the Semester, starting at 5:00 PM, with high school registration right around the corner in January. Parent University next month is a perfect time to visit Woodruff and see what programs might be a good fit for your high school student. Woodruff Career Technical Center Principal, Ms. Patty Avery, is here tonight, and I invited her to the podium to provide some additional information about what attendees at Parent University can look forward to in a couple of weeks.
Good evening, Board President Ross and Dr. Carr and board members. As you know, Woodruff Career and Technical Center is home to many career and technical education programs, as finely displayed on the artwork behind you. Our great art team did that. It's also home to the Illinois Teacher of the Year. Our Contemporary School is on the second floor, and our Regional Safe School is on the third floor. We are proud of the offerings that we are able to provide our district students. It's hard to believe that we have less than thirty days left in our first semester, which means high school students will be thinking about and registering for next year's courses when they return from holiday break in January. We have focused on our upcoming Parent University, on helping our families be prepared for that process. In addition to providing information on the other needs of high school students, they may have, what they may be thinking about in their future. So, some of the workshops we have planned are including: Preparing for College and ACT Prep with Illinois Math Academy; The Top Ten Most Frequently Asked Questions About ACT, SAT and the College Prep Process; Exploring Career Cruising: Helping Guide Your Child to the Right Career Path; Helping Your Students Survive in High School; and Career Technical Education: Opening the Door for College and Career-Minded Young People. We have our Assistant, my Assistant Principals over here, Ms. Davis and Ms. Mitchell. Ms. Davis is the Safe School, and Ms. Mitchell's Contemporary, and Ms. Smith is our Assistant Principal over the Career Tech Piece. And she's gonna give you a quick preview of what our parents and students can expect during their presentation.
Thank you, Patty. Good evening, Dr. Carr, President Ross, distinguished board members and audience. When I was asked to do this presentation, they said I had ninety seconds, and I have to leave you wanting more. So, here we go. Picture it, 1973. An impressionable young lady, high school-bound, long hair, parted in the middle, having to choose where to go, what classes to take. She knows you take home ec, you go to the kitchen, you're a stay-at-home. You choose, seventy-three, remember? You choose typing, you're gonna go in the secretary pool. Not anymore. Here at WCTC, nineteen, 2015, we have Culinary Arts, we have CNA. Check out the bulletin boards. We have Cosmetology. We have Hair Braiding. We have Engineering. We have Auto Body. We have Construction Trades. We have Barbering. All these can lead you to a college education. Back in 1973, do we want to stay in the kitchen? Do we want to go to college? Now, through WCTC, what we have to offer, we can get you both places. Back to 2015. Thank you, Mrs. Smith. That's great. Great visualization. All right. We also want our parents of our younger students to know there's plenty of workshops for them to choose as well. Mrs. Thomas, our Illinois Teacher of the Year, will offer a workshop on L3, Live, Laugh and Love, and she'll be offering strategies that parents can assist their student with to keep them engaged in school. We also have Life Traps That Feel Normal. It's another workshop offered by Mr. Charles Minor. The Peoria Campus, the University of Illinois Chicago College of Nursing, will share information about nursing careers for parents looking for a career change, or for students looking at the nursing field as a career path. We have a few options in our Health and Fitness category, including Understanding Your Metabolism and Snackademics. And our Restorative Justice Team, and they're here tonight as well, Ms. Anderson Loy, Mr. Scott, and Mr. Turner, and Mr. Oliver. They will be having a presentation on Restorative Conversations and Peace Circles, and they are going to share a quick synopsis of their presentation tonight.
I don't know, I don't know the order. I guess it might be alphabetical. Hello, Ms. Anderson Loy from Woodruff. And just, my part is just to kind of give you a little history of how we got where we are with Restorative Justice. Just if anyone does not know what it is, basically, in a nutshell, it's giving students opportunities to learn from their mistakes, and also to move schools from a punitive stance to a more restorative approach. So, Woodruff was awarded an AFT grant back in the spring of 2013, and we were given the charge to take a really close look at how we handle discipline practices at our school as it related to the schoolhouse, to the jailhouse pipeline. Teachers collaborated, which was, which has made this a wonderful, wonderful grant, because with our great administration, we've been able to collaborate with them, and we were actually asked what PDs we needed. So, that's kind of unheard of from the bottom up. We usually get kind of from the top down of what we're getting as far as PDs. Some of the things that we chose as teachers were looking at different teaching strategies and different practices. We really delve into brain research. We took the kids on about three field trips, two to Chicago, one to Springfield. One of our teachers put together a spoken word event. We'll be having that again in February. We've been looking at Love and Logic. And in our journey, we came across Mr. Robert Spicer, who was a dean at Christian Finger High School. When they tragically lost a student right side, right outside their school, he, student was murdered. So, we were able to ask him to come and be a consultant for us. And so, since a year ago, he has been with us periodically. He trained the whole staff a year ago in August, and then he trained Restorative Justice Team. His philosophy was to have a team within the school to really launch what was going on and trying to change the culture and the climate of our school. That was the number one thing. So, changing that culture and climate has been our big focus. So, in August of 2014, like I said, all, all of our staff at that time got trained. Then, February of 2015, we got a Restorative Justice Team, and I'm gonna let one of my colleagues explain how we launched the program.
Hi, Brandon Oliver, High School English at Woodruff. One of the big things we did to kick off our Restorative Justice Program at WCTC was we had kind of kick off assembly for kids, which seems like not that complicated a thing, but it really helped communicate to them what we were doing. We even prefaced it, we made some teaser posters around, coming soon, Restorative Justice. And so, they were asking questions, what's gonna happen? And we had this assembly with some music. We had a couple of teachers doing a rap over there. Mr. Scott was one of the highlights of that. We had video that some students had taken, and some teachers had made, helped make as well. We had some giveaways, and then we ultimately just an explanation of what Restorative Justice was, how they were gonna experience it at Woodruff, and how they were gonna experience Peace Circles, which is the same way we've been doing it right now.
Hello, Scott. I teach history over at Woodruff. I'm gonna tell you guys a little bit about what we're doing right now with Restorative Justice. So peace circles for everybody is what's going on right now, and basically it's to try to change the culture and climate, like Robert Spicer had trained us on. We're trying to change the whole culture of what's on in the building. We've also started restorative conferences with the students, and that's, let's say, a student gets in trouble, we'll have a one-on-one conference with the student or conference with the student administrator, and work on restorative ways that we can punish the student without offending them. So that ties into Senate Bill 100. We're trying that restorative conference, kind of at the beginning stages of it, but we're really implementing that with request forms from the students, and also if we have an emergency, if a student gets in trouble, we pick and choose. Sometimes we're holding that restorative conference instead of going right to school or out-of-school suspensions. And then obviously, the whole building is getting trained on restorative language, talking with the students about if they're escalated, how do you feel, what do you need? So the whole teaching staff has been trained with restorative communication with the students as well.
Hello, my name is Jacob Turner. I am a social studies middle school teacher, and I'm here to talk kind of about how we were trained. The four of us, and along with some other members who are currently not with us anymore, did a three-day training. And, sorry, I didn't mean they passed away. I didn't want it to seem that way. They just were reassigned. I should have clarified that a little bit before, so. So, sorry about that. But we did a three-day training, and it really dove into how the process and connecting with our students. And the four of us who are still here now, we feel and have been practicing and teaching that we feel it's really making a difference. I believe it was about a month ago, we trained six more teachers. This coming Monday, on the 16th, we have another six that are going to be trained with Robert Spicer. And what we're hoping is that every person in our building will be trained, and then so that way we can have restorative conversations and peace circles to really change the climate of our community every day. It can be used through curriculum. It can be used as a team building between students, building relationships with staff members. So I believe we're on the right way. So thank you guys very much.
And then, sorry, let me wrap it up by saying where we're going to go from here. Towards the end of the year, we want to establish a peer jury, so we're going to sit down with a group of students and hopefully have a trial run on some minor behaviors where we can train those students to come up with their own discipline, and we want to get that kicked off by the end of the year. And then obviously, we want this for, we want a restorative conference for every in-school suspension student before they come back into class. We want to have every student experience a restorative conference, and currently we are basically doing that with every out-of-school suspension. Before they come back into our building, we're sitting down and having that restorative conference with the student. So thank you for your time.
Thank you. Just a second, Ms. Woodruff Meyer has a question.
Real quickly, I know you haven't been at this real long, but do you feel like it's working in all aspects of your building, including the safe school students?
Yes, we looked at some, if you want to tell me about the data that we showed. We're presenting at Parent University. We've got data.
Yeah, we definitely invite you to come to Parent University, but we sat down with some of our in-school and out-of-school data, and we looked at a few different data points, but we could really kind of target that in-school and out-of-school data as being where we think it's been a positive impact, sorry. Our out-of-school data has really dropped dramatically, and the in-school data has actually gone up a little bit, and we actually think that's a good thing, because those students are getting that restorative conference within school. So we don't think it's a bad thing that in-schools went up a little bit, out-of-schools dropped dramatically.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you, and I will just say, I've been in teaching in the field of education for a long time, and restorative practices is powerful. The conversations that they have, just sitting and giving the students a voice, it's just powerful, and it will eventually change the culture of our building. It's starting to. Okay, so anyway, in closing, I hope everyone will join us in two weeks on Thursday, November 19th, from 5:00 to 8:00 for Parent University. We will have free childcare and a great lasagna dinner. We will also be providing tours of our career tech classrooms from 5:00 to 6:00. In addition, our cosmetology students will be offering free manicures or pedicures, and our barbering students will be offering free haircuts, starting at 5:00. So it's a night you don't want to miss. Thank you.
Great job. Thank you. Okay. So that was the first presentation. District presentation, Stan. Do you have, will you do the foundation, or do you have someone doing this?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening. The Peoria Public School Foundation is a private, not-for-profit organization established in 1992 and governed by an independent board in close cooperation with the school board. Our mission is to support excellence in our schools. Thank you to all the teachers that applied for grants this year. We are in our 18th year of providing classroom grants and close to a quarter of a million dollars to date. Thank you as well to our Classroom Grant Committee, Susan Gershnic, Brooke Spellman, Foundation Board Member Val Pierce, Foundation Board Member Ed Berry, who's present tonight, and Kathy Wiggers. Two years ago, we collaborated the efforts of the Community Foundation of Central Illinois Classroom Grant Program with our program. Tonight, we have their CEO, Mark Roberts, here with us to share in recognizing the teachers for this year's grants. Mark's there. Earlier, we celebrated with cake and punch and presented the teachers with their certificates for the grants. At this time, I'd like to ask the teachers to stand when I read their name, and please stand until all 23 teachers have been recognized. The first school is Rolling Acres Middle School, Elizabeth Arvin, Sarah Cantor, and Laura Bali. We have Woodruff Career and Technical Center, Jacob Dupree. Peoria Adult Transition Academy, Stephanie Zutter. Tree Wind School, Kami Williams. Thomas Jefferson Primary School, Lauren Wolf. Peoria High School, Simon Webb. Charter Oak Primary, Denise Hegeman. Woodruff Wilson Primary, Lisa Voiles. Quest Charter Academy Middle School, Roy Wiley. Sterling Middle School, Cora Knott. And I'll have Mark come up and read the second half, and I'd like to boast that we have all 23 teachers here tonight, 100% attendance for the presentation.
Thank you, Cindy. Members of the board and Dr. Karat, I'm pleased to be here with you. At the Community Foundation of Central Illinois, part of our mission statement is connecting people who care with causes that matter. What I like tonight is the people who care, one of the 300 funds that make up the Community Foundation, are Murray and Rena Yeomans. And the Yeomans met here, they raised a family here, they had a business here, and some years ago, they sold it and they moved to California. But before they did, they established a significant fund at the Community Foundation of Central Illinois. Every year, part of that money is used to make these grants to classroom teachers. And you know what? We're particularly pleased to be able to do that, because if anyone can stretch a dollar, it's a classroom teacher. So we're pleased to do it. Thank you for having us here. So to finish up those award winners for this year, from Roosevelt Magnet School, Arian Wallace, please stand. From Sterling Middle School, Michelle Corey. From Hines Primary School, Beth Barksdale. From Thomas Jefferson Primary School, Julie Jenkins. From Peoria High School, Teresa Harper. From Glen Oak Learning Center, Lane Muzarali, Relly, pardon me, and April Hunter. From Roosevelt Magnet School, Kelsey Malahy. From Richwoods High School, Shelley Doherty. From Roosevelt Magnet School, Caitlin Reardon. And finally, from Harrison Community Learning Center, Mindy Lamar.
Thank you so much. You can have a seat. I've been with the Foundation now for five years, and my favorite part about the job is being able to work with students, but a close second is working with our awesome teachers in District 150. And since we did that pretty quickly, I'd like to bring forward just a few teachers, just to talk for a minute about their grants and what the grants mean to them. I have Laura Bali here from Rolling Acres School.
Good evening. My name is Laura Bali, and this is my eighth year in the district and my fourth year teaching at Rolling Acres Middle School, where it's always a great day to be a Cougar. This year, I co-wrote a grant, Cougar Catapults, with two excellent teachers and colleagues at Rolling Acres, Liz Arvin and Sarah Cantor. Over the years, I have been honored to receive several grants, and I've truly enjoyed implementing them with all of the students that I've had the opportunity to do so with. The ideas and programs have just been truly a pleasure, and I also very much appreciate the support given by the District 150 Foundation and the Community Foundation of Central Illinois. It is just so much appreciated. With the support of these foundations, I have been able to provide students with opportunities to participate in knitting clubs, which I called the Thread Cafe, pumpkin carving clubs, several art clubs, and because of their support, we have also started a school garden at Rolling Acres, of which Ms. Sarah Cantor is now taking sponsorship of, and she's turning into a year-round eco club, so it's growing in that, and that's thanks to the foundations for planting that seed. And also, this year, we will be experiencing Cougar Catapults as this year's grant, a cross-curricular unit incorporating science, technology, art, and math, with the grand finale being that students will use their catapult to demonstrate and measure the trajectory of marshmallows dipped in paint and shot at a canvas. And so we're going to be doing that at Rolling Acres. The support of the District 150 Foundation and the Community Foundation of Central Illinois brings experiences to our students that make their learning experience in District 150 so memorable and meaningful to them. So thank you so much for your support.
When I grow up someday, I want to be just like Laura Bali. The other teacher I'd like to bring up is Lane Muzarali from Glen Oak School.
Hi, I've been with the district all my close to 30 years, and over this time, I've been allowed to do many projects with the students through the grants that have been provided. Every year, students come back to me and they say to me, "I still have that project. It's sitting in my room." That is so important to them, and it's important to me. But the most memorable thing that has ever happened to me is I took a group to the museum, and the student walked in there and he said, "This is the greatest day of my life. This is the greatest day of my life." And as educators, you hope that you do that for a child. Thank you. Thank you once again. Good evening.
We're going to lose half our body, isn't it? I'll wait until they finish. I think so. Chris, this is, I think, so a few slides. Let's let them get out first. Oh, it's already done. Come on, let it look. It was down when I first came in. The next on the agenda is, we're giving them time to visit with each other and leave. Future financial pitcher, implications and alternatives for District 150, Dr. William Phillips. Welcome, Dr. Phillips.
Thank you. Thank you very much for inviting me here to talk about school finance. Looks like I threw a lot, you know, a lot of the people are not interested in school finance. I can't imagine why. Well, anyway, you know, it was a grand experience as an old-time superintendent, watching a board meeting in action and seeing all the good things that happened to boys and girls in schools and school districts throughout the state. It was wonderful for me. Just a minute to tell you about myself before I get into these very interesting topics. I'm a retired school superintendent. I was a superintendent for 26 years, five different districts, all three kinds of districts in Illinois. Retired from Belleville, which is across from St. Louis in the Metro East area. Currently, I'm an Associate Professor of Educational Leadership at the University of Illinois at Springfield, and I'm also a Field Service Director for the Illinois Association of School Administrators, the State Superintendent's Professional Association. My job is to visit my seven regions. I cover all the regions, from Sangamon County and Springfield North, except for Cook and the Coller Counties. So I get a lot of meetings with superintendents. I have another one tomorrow. It's a rather routine occurrence. I talk with a lot of school boards, talk with a lot of superintendents about financial issues. At the university, school finance is my specialty. I teach teachers to be principals, principals to be superintendents, and superintendents to be chief school business officials. So school finance is an interesting topic for me. It might be pretty dry for your crowd, so I'll try to liven it up. If you don't mind, I hate that with people talking to my back, so I'm probably going to move over here so I can talk to people so that they're not looking at the back of my head. Dr. Karat asked me to come and talk to you a little bit about school finance and what's happening now and what may happen in the future. Really, there's a lot of synchronicity in what's happening with school finance with the legislature. They are not totally different bodies. They operate in sync. What the legislature does affects schools, especially financially, and there are some big ones coming up. And I think the school board needs to have an idea of what some of these are. And also, I think the people in the community need to know what some of these changes can mean. Now, this is not just Peoria District 150. This is going to affect school districts throughout the state of Illinois, if it happens, and I think it will. I'm really traveling throughout the state, talking to superintendents and boards and doing workshops all over, trying to tell people what may be coming. Let's take a look at the first issue. The first issue is a piece of legislation that has partially passed. It has passed the Senate, and this legislation is called Senate Bill 318. Probably, I've been in this business 40 years. It's probably in the top five bills as far as importance that I've ever seen. It's going to make some major changes in school finance for school districts throughout the state. I sifted a little piece of the actual law itself. The law applies to all home rule and non-home rule districts outside of Cook County. Now, home rule simply means we're talking about cities of over 25,000, of which Peoria would be one. In the original legislation, we have tax caps now, but not in Peoria County. About half of the school districts in Illinois currently have tax caps, about 60% to 70% of the students. You need to know that this was originally given to Cook County and the Coller Counties in the mid-'90s without them voting upon it. The legislature just gave them this. After that, up until now, it has been voted on county by county by county. Having said that, no county has voted on this successfully since 2002. The reason for that is, is we now know what this really means as far as school finance. The reason for that is, is we now know what this really means as far as school finance. Now, you're looking at the exception of Cook County. Is this another one of those pieces of legislation that only affects everybody but Cook County? Well, no, it doesn't. They're next in the bill and it does address Cook County too. This would affect all taxing bodies, not just school districts. Every kind of taxing body that currently does not have tax caps would have. Okay, let me go on. It effectively switches all school districts to PTAL status for the years 2016 and 2017. Okay, this is 2015 and financially speaking, the district is going to do what is called making their levy in December of this year. The levy is when you ask for money from the county based upon your authorized rates, previous referendums, and so on and so forth.
Dr. Phillips?
Yes.
Could you just explain that acronym for the audience, PTAL?
PTAL. PTAL actually means Property Tax Extension Limitation Law. Let me break down the words. Property tax, okay, you all know what that is. Extension is the amount of money that a district gets from the process of levying for it in December. It's kind of a convoluted process. It's not as simple as just asking for money and getting it. No, no, no. That would be way too, way too easy. So, basically, we have to go through a process without knowing one of the key numbers in your extension, which is your value of your property in December when you do it. You won't know that till the spring. So, districts have to make guesses, usually inflated guesses, in December to make sure they get the property tax money they're eligible for. Now, this is, would be for the years 2016 and 17. The importance of that is, is 2015 and this levy may very well be the last levy that districts have that don't have tax caps, like Peoria County School Districts, can make under the old rules, which I'll kind of explain. I don't want to get into too much detail and please feel free to stop me if I've said something that you do not understand or you'd like to be explained further. If you have tax caps now, basically, the amount of money you get is based upon last year's extension, and that's the last two L's in PTAL, limitation law. You're going to limit the amount of money you can get from tax caps. Now, the limitation has a high mark of five percent, but we've never got to five percent. And the low mark is a federal number that is recalculated every year called the Consumer Price Index. The current Consumer Price Index is point zero eight. It's not even one percent. So, if you were a district like Springfield, and Springfield, Illinois, District 186, very comparable to your district, basically, they would take their extension, the amount of money they were extended last year, times point zero eight, and that's all of the new money that they could expect to get for the next year. So, they are restricting the amount of tax money a district can get by this artificially-created number. Now, you'll see also, it says zero percent. In Senate Bill 318, they have frozen that amount to zero. So, in other words, school districts in the taxing years of 2016 and 2017, and this is everybody, even the PTAL districts that currently have it, would get no new tax money. None. Now, that's pretty drastic measures when you do that. You and I know that your own personal finances are based upon things getting more expensive as time goes on. Insurance, utilities, even salaries. I'm just guessing. I'll go out on a limb and guess that all of your teachers expect some sort of raise pretty much every year. That was a joke. But they do. So, this is a very serious matter. So, essentially, if this passes, and it's already passed the Senate, now, tomorrow is the only day that is scheduled for legislative hearings. By the way, I'm a former lobbyist too. I don't usually advertise that, but I am. So, you know, I deal a lot with the legislature. I can, I can see this coming. Now, the Democrats and the Republicans right now don't agree on very much politically, but this is one they agree on. They think it's a good idea and I'm pretty sure even the governor will too. So, the chances of this passing are fairly good. Now, there are some other pieces of this bill that I do not think will pass. One is a pension bailout for the City of Chicago School Districts, because the City of Chicago has their own pension fund for teachers. They don't have teachers' retirement system the way we do. And there's also a formula rechange for general state aid where a bunch of legislators are going to get together and rewrite the general state aid formula, which is a really scary proposition, because my experience in dealing with legislatures and their firm understanding of school finance is not real good. So, it's a pretty scary thing to think that they're going to rewrite the general state aid formula, but I don't think that'll pass either. But I think this first part will. Now, PTAL, just a little bit more about, well, how is this different than what we already have? Well, let me tell you what you have and then I'll tell you what you're in store for. Right now, your property taxes are based upon the property value in District 150, okay? The commercial and real estate that's in the district, the more you have, the greater opportunity to generate tax money for the school district. That's, that's what your tax money is based on. And looking at the different rates you have and funds and so forth, some of them are capped based upon previous referendums with what I call authorized limits that's limited and some are not. Most people assume that all taxes are strictly limited and you have to have a referendum to raise it. Well, that's not true. There are some exceptions. Okay, so, you would change from that to whatever you got last year in tax money. That's your extension. There's that word again. So, now, you're switching over from the property value to last year's extension being the key factor. Therefore, the higher the extension the previous year, the more opportunity you have to get tax money. Now, remember, we've been multiplying at times the CPI, which may be gone, at least for two years. And they said, "Well, this will only be temporary and we'll only do this for two years." And they also said, "All those districts like Peoria 150 that are not tax capped, we'll probably switch them back." Don't you believe it? I read the whole bill, all eighty-nine pages of it. I see no mechanism in that bill to change it back. I think they'll leave it the way it is. So, you'll be, you'll be tax capped if this bill passes. Positioning the district for Senate Bill 318 and PTAL requirements. I can remember in the nineties, when this first came upon the scene for Cook and the Coller Counties, and then other counties voted on it too, and it was an unknown factor. They really didn't know what was going to be the effect, but the long-term effect is simply this. It constricts the amount of tax money that a district can get from year to year based upon this artificial number from the federal government. Now, the number has never been above three and a half percent, ever, and it's as low as point zero one percent, which is really nothing. And of course, in the legislation, they want to go to nothing. It's hard for me to imagine how they think that school districts can get by with no new tax money for two years. It would be like you working in your job. Well, you're going to take a, you're going to take a freeze and you're not going to get any pay increase for two years. That's, that's a difficult situation. All right, here's what I'm suggesting, and that's exactly what it is, suggestions. But I've been talking to school districts up and down the state for the last three or four months, really since the summer, that this was passed, and even though they're not having a veto session, not getting into politics with you now, simply because they, they've written it off because the, you know, they can't come together on veto-proof majorities to overrule the governor's veto. I think they'll just wait and then when the new legislature starts in January, it'll only require a simple majority and not a supermajority, this will happen. Now, the date, they have a date in the bill when this would start and it's March the first of 2016. So, if they use the bill as it's written right now, March the first is the key date. That's, that's D-Day. That's when this would start. District should maximize, this is the second bullet, district should maximize your 2015 levy, which is done in December, to increase future tax extensions, especially if no new tax property or property tax money is available for two years. Now, what you are doing is, is as I told you before, there are some tax rates that are not limited. Those tax rates are IMRF, which is for the retirement costs for non-certified employees, Social Security, which are retirement costs for all non-certified employees, and one called the TORT Fund, which is a fund that's been created to reduce TORT liability for the district. Your insurance comes out of it and other, and other things. But basically, it's, it's not limited. So, the point is this, if you can consider and look at what you have and consider raising it, you will position yourself for the future. If tax caps happens, it will happen the same way and in the same format as it has for districts in Cook and the Coller Counties since the nineties, and that is, it's a continuous reduction in tax money. What it creates is a number called a limiting rate. You're no longer going to be able to capture all of your EAV, your property value in 150. It's going to be continually whittled away based upon the CPI. And of course, now, they want to freeze it to nothing for two years. Flexible tax rates should be raised. The IMR, the IMRF fund and Social Security are flexible. By flexible, that means they're not limited by previous referendums. The situation is, in a non-tax cap school district like District 150, what you ask for, you will get. Now, now, that doesn't mean that you should ask for a huge amount of money and try to move it over to the Ed Fund for teacher salaries. You can't do that. Money cannot be moved once it's in this fund. However, it is flexible in nature. The TORT Fund is basically the same. I mentioned a document called the Risk Management Plan. This is a document, and almost all school districts have one. It's a document where the district outlines how it's going to use the money from the TORT Fund, which is basically unlimited also. Both of these funds and concurrent levies should be increased to meet future needs. Now, so you have to kind of be in a mode of looking at where you are with these funds and thinking about raising them, because this may be your last chance to do this. If it happens the way I think it will happen, then basically, you're going to be frozen at the level of this levy for probably two years with no increase. Now, in other words, if you hire more non-certified people for IMRF and/or Social Security, and they're a little bit different. Everybody's in Social Security that's non-certified, but to be in IMRF, you have to work six hundred hours a year, so not every non-certified person is in IMRF. And of course, the teachers are in TRS. That's a separate story. So, basically, you have this opportunity now to set your levy. You have to kind of think about two years from now. Let me give you a good example. Several years ago, the legislature and their infinite wisdom felt that college tuition was too high for students and that colleges, every year, were just raising the tuition rates and students really didn't know how much they were going to pay as the years went on. So, they made a law to try to compensate for this, and the law basically said that once a student starts in a university, whatever his charge for tuition can't be raised until he graduates. Well, what universities had to do to meet that requirement was try to guess what it's going to cost to educate that student four years from now. So, they had to inflate the number of the first year, assuming that this cost was going to go up. So, it's the same kind of thing. And that, and that's caused tuition rates to be high because they require you to guesstimate what you're going to pay at, when the students graduate in four years. Okay. Now, districts have long-term debt, and this is like buying a house. Most people, when they buy a house, can't write a check and buy a house. They can't buy a car, write a check and buy a car, but you still want a house and you still want a car, so you borrow the money and pay for it over a period of years. Okay? Well, school districts do the same thing. They sell bonds, long-term debt. When, this is important, when tax caps come, at the very moment it starts, which could be at twelve-thirty, you know, on the night before March the first, 2016, or twelve o'clock, excuse me, not twelve-thirty, you're going to create a new number that District 150 doesn't have now. You don't have this number, but you will at that moment. A number will be created and it's a single number, and the number is called the Debt Service Extension Base. Every tax cap district has a number. When I talk to superintendents throughout the state, and I talk to a lot of them, I reviewed your, your financial records and I've looked at it. I do it all the time. I talked to two separate, two superintendents today about this very same issue and school boards in analyzing these documents. But this, this Debt Service Extension Base is, it's a number that's going to stay with you, so the idea is, is to make the number so that it can last into the future. Now, the only way to raise this number is to have a referendum just to raise that number. Referendums to raise the Debt Service Extension Base are pretty tough to come by. Suburban districts try it all the time. For every ten or fifteen or twenty that, that put it on the ballot, one may pass. It doesn't happen very often. So, the point is, it's important that the district look at what your Debt Service Extension Base is. I've looked at your bond reports and you should probably have your bond house, your bond underwriters, the people you deal with, with bonds, and your high-quality financial team who I've met and have the highest regard for, including Eric and Carla and Mike, and see what the Debt Service Extension Base is right now. And then, make a determination. Well, this is going to be our Debt Service Extension Base, and if that's going to be our number, that's the one we're going to have. Now, how can you make that number higher? The Debt Service Extension Base, here's the definition. I'm going into a lot of stuff and I, I know I got way more than ninety seconds than the lady had before, so if you kind of bear with me. Basically, it's the amount of principal and interest you owed on certain kinds of bonds at the moment you enter tax caps, okay? That number is created. The way to increase the number is to increase the principal and interest that's owed at that moment. Now, that's a tough proposition for school districts. That's extra debt. That's higher taxes. No doubt about it. It is. However, you are planning for the future. The future is now. If, if your Debt Service Extension Base is low, then it will restrict the amount of bonds that you can sell without a referendum. Now, not every bond that a district sells has a referendum. We have referendums, we have backdoor referendums, and we have no referendums. We have referendums, we have backdoor referendums, and we have no referendums. So any of those kinds of bonds are going to be restricted by this number if it's low. So basically, I'm suggesting that you just look at what you have now and make a determination with your financial team. Is it high enough? Is it big enough? If it isn't, you may want to consider selling bonds. I looked at your bond issues. Basically, the amount of bonds that you can sell is called your bonded debt limit. There's a high end to it. And then there's what you currently have outstanding, and the difference is called your margin. District 150 has a pretty good debt margin right now, compared to what you have outstanding and your bonded debt limit, the high end. So there's room there. There are districts that have very little room. They're bonded, they have no room to do this. So they're in a different situation. So that's the Debt Service Extension Base. Now, remember, this is all going to happen at the same moment. I just gave you the definition of the Debt Service Extension Base. It's a principal and interest. Basically, I'm suggesting that you just take a look with your financial team at what this number is right now, and determine if that number is sufficient to go into the future. You're probably going to get one chance to do this, and if March the first date holds up, your time is pretty short. You have between now and March the first to do something. Most bonds, other than life safety bonds, require a minimum of 30 days for a backdoor referendum to put it in the paper. People have a chance to, you know, take a look at what's in the paper, they'll make a public notice. This is not private or confidential stuff, it'll be in your newspapers, and make that determination about a future bond sale. I can tell you that districts throughout the state of Illinois are selling bonds as we speak. They are positioning themselves in their school district for what I am pretty sure is going to happen. I can't say for sure that this will happen, nor am I sure about what the final form of the bill will be. But I think it will come. Now, you're thinking, well, if the date is March the first, the legislative process and all that takes a long time. No, no, no. This can happen in one day. One day, they can pass this bill. It'll come up. They have something called shell bills. You have to live in Springfield to really get a good taste of this stuff. Shell bills that are empty, they'll fill it up in one day, they've been pre-approved, and it'll go to the governor and be signed by that evening. And that's, it's happened.
Dr. Phillips?
Yes, sir.
Question. Does this also apply to health, life, safety bonds, which currently do not acquire?
Yes, it applies to all bonds.
All bonds?
Yes.
Actually, the health, life, safety bonds improves our Debt Service Extension Base.
Now, health and life safety bonds has a different caveat with them. Health and life safety is when you fix up your buildings and improve them, new roofs or HVAC systems or whatever. Those require approval from sort of a three-step process, and the bottleneck is the state board. You know, the first part with the architect can be done expeditiously, the second part with the regional office, the same. The state board is your bottleneck. So there, if you're thinking about life safety bonds, you probably, you know, need to know with your architect how this can be moved through the approval process by the state board. Once the state board approves it, then you can sell the bonds with no referendum. Now, this is all going to be a part of the Debt Service Extension Base, as it may happen. I know this is all bad news for you, and I heard such wonderful news before. I feel bad even telling you this.
I believe we have about $15 million in health, life, safety bonds approved at this point.
And those are approved by?
ROE.
The ROE.
They're good to go.
Okay, so we can do $15 million of that, and then still the state board has to approve that, right?
I thought those were state-approved. I mean, they don't come back if they're not state-approved.
Sometimes districts, maybe what you're talking about, get preapproval and don't sell the bonds. In other words, they get all the approval ready, but don't sell the bonds right away. We need to know that very quickly.
Yes, sir.
Now, the last piece of good news I have for you.
I just wanted to point out that the health, life, safety is in addition to the Debt Service Extension Base.
And I thought I'd give you all the cold water at once, you know? You know, while I mess around, might as well just give you the whole bucket. This is a different item. This is completely separate from what I've been talking about. But this one's been cooking for years in Springfield. This is the Speaker's, if you know who I mean. This is his personal favorite. Now, this has to do with pension costs. For those of you that are political junkies like me, you know that the legislature passed a pension bill several years ago, went through an elaborate court process, and their bill was overturned. So what they wanted to do, they can't do. So, basically, part, a fairly large part of what teachers get from their pensions are paid for by the state of Illinois, and I know that seems strange. Why is the state of Illinois paying for pension costs for a teacher in Peoria District 150? Can't answer that, because it's not logical. But it's been there a long time, I can tell you that, long before me, and I'm as old as dirt. So what's going to happen is, and I'm pretty sure this will happen this spring too, because this one's been cooking for years. What they're going to do is, is take that debt that the state of Illinois is paying now on behalf of school districts, like District 150, and they're going to shift that cost right to the district. Now, how much is that going to be? The second little bullet, it's about 8% of whatever your certified salaries are. So your financial team can make a pretty quick assessment of what kind of money we're talking about. We've asked for years, since this thing has come up, we being the Superintendent's Association and others like Tom Leahy School Board Association, the deal with school boards, we've all tried to. If we're going to do this, don't give it to us all at once. Sort of give it to us in pieces incrementally. Give us a chance to pay this. And they've also, you'll be glad to know this, they've also refused to give us any mechanism, us being school districts, any mechanism to pay this new bill. So you're just going to get this new bill. Over what period of time? I do not know. At one time, we had it negotiated till 12 years, but that deal fell through, and so we're negotiating now, but we're not at 12 years. In other words, you can phase it in. You're not going to pay for the whole bill right away, but there's no way to pay for it. Yes, sir.
So I understand that it's going to be between four and five years as you phase it in.
Yes, yes. That's the current, that's the current political thought right now, four and five years to pay this. But it's a pretty substantial bill. Are you alone? No. Every school district in Illinois is going to get this. Whether you're PTAL or not PTAL, you're going to get this. And so this shift in money, this is about $900 million that the state is going to shed themselves of paying, and they're going to give it to school districts depending upon your salaries. Okay? So this is going to be a pretty hefty new bill with no mechanism to get this money. The point is, I thought I would include this because of the previous discussion about your Debt Service Extension Base and your levy that's going to happen in December. Kind of, I thought I'd just give it to you all at once, so you can see what's happening. The conventional wisdom is, this will happen this spring, sometime this spring. If the Speaker has a high priority and the governor won't object to this, because this follows his philosophy, this should go through pretty quickly. I have a feeling they'll kind of do them together, because they're so big, they're so massive, and they're going to be so effective, and they'll do it very quickly. There won't be a lot of time for, you know, to have discussion on the committees and so forth. So it'll happen. So, okay, I kind of told you a little bit more, and I kind of got ahead of my PowerPoint, but this cost shift is a high legislative Peoria. They want to get rid of this bill, and they're going to give it back to school districts. So districts throughout the state of Illinois, like District 150, are, you know, wondering, how are we going to, you know, how are we going to handle this new bill on top of getting tax caps, on top of getting zeroed out for two years? That's three big body blows all at once. So I think I'm about done there. And I kind of give myself a caveat, you know, you can't second-guess everything that the legislature is going to do, but I've been around a long time, and I can see the handwriting on the wall for these things. My job is to try to let school districts know in time, so that you can make adjustments if you wish. It's a lot easier to say, well, we knew this, but, you know, this is what we decided to do based upon the conventional wisdom, versus, oh, my gosh, this happened and we didn't know it was coming. So, those are kind of all the issues wrapped up, and let me kind of stop here, see if the board has any questions about what I'm, you know, kind of telling you. And I did it in a PowerPoint, and not too long, and I know it's been a long time. It's probably, I've had 30 or 40 minutes here, you know, compared to the lady's 90 seconds. I mean, I bore you to tears with school finance, but questions from the board.
Anybody have any questions regarding Mr. Cloyde?
Mr. Bush, do you know what our approximate cost shift would be over that period of time? Can you give us?
Currently, we book $24 million of on-behalf payments for TRS from the state.
Okay, but this is a percentage of the salary, so...
That's the same thing. The number he's giving you is exactly how it's delineated from the state board, so his number is correct. In other words, these payments are called on behalf of, they're in your financial records.
Right. I know that, but that doesn't square with 8% of the salaries by any means.
Doesn't it?
No.
Okay.
Not what I see here. So it's, they're two different numbers.
Okay.
They're significantly different, so...
I agree with you.
We need to understand what that is, because one's an order of magnitude larger.
Okay.
One's amortized over the life of the existing base of employees that are calculated within the, I'm going into pension accrual.
Okay. So this is an accrual number that they're showing as the on behalf, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay. As opposed to an instantaneous or a one-year number?
Correct. What your pay-in would be. If I may compare it, IMRF calculates annually what our pay-in should be based on our existing base, and we get a bill for that every year, which we satisfy through 12 increments. The TRS, on the other hand, is, it's not the same one, so.
Okay.
I'll, we'll try our best to reconcile the two numbers with you. Know it to be substantial.
Well, what would be, just, what this sounds like is, first of all, they nail both of our feet to the floor, and then they say we're going to run a marathon. I mean, it's just ridiculous.
Couldn't have said it better.
And on top of that, you're on a starvation diet, because we're not going to pay the entire amount of school funds, so...
I didn't even, I didn't get to the point to tell you that your other big money from the state of Illinois, General State Aid, is currently prorated at 92%. That was what was promised. You're now getting dollars from the state of Illinois like you got in 2009. So you're living on $2,009 right now from the state of Illinois, and I don't think you'll get all the money you were promised this year. Last year, they prorated you again in April, and now I think they'll do it again.
Especially if they run out of cash and...
Yeah. So, more feet to the floor and running a marathon.
What was, do you recall when Treasury Munger said we would run out of cash at the state level?
Well, they're no longer paying their pension payments. He's talking about the Comptroller of the state of Illinois has pension payments on your behalf, the teachers and the staff members. Now, that has been a, that has been an issue for 50 years. I mean, we've been through a lot of governors that didn't pay what they were supposed to pay into the pension funds. And Blagojevich took it to new heights when he didn't pay anything for a while. And then the system really started to destabilize, because they weren't putting in the money that they are. So for a while, they were paying their pension payments, but now they're reducing them again, what they're paying. They're running out of money. All of the universities, all the public universities in the state of Illinois have not received any money this year. None, zero. So they're living off money they had before, and tuition payments and so on and so forth. In fact, K-12 is the only financial program that has been approved.
When Governor Rauner was at Charter Oak with the visit that he made last week, President Ross and I were there to greet him, and we had a chance to ask him about Senate Bill 318, and I got what I would consider to be a very murky answer. Let's just put it politely that way. And I planned to follow up with his staff, because I was given the name of someone who said we'd be happy to respond, but it'll be very interesting to see what sort of response there is, and my guess is it will not be very definitive.
Yeah. Well, that particular issue, and if you're wondering, why are they doing this? I mean, why would they simply not give you any money for a couple of years? I mean, knowing full well what it could mean for school districts, who is already getting prorated for General State Aid and other funds. I mean, it just gets worse and worse and worse, and the answer is, it holds well. If you were to go, if you were to go to a breakfast shop and talk with some people in the morning, and I'm a legislator, and I told you, hey, I just passed, I just voted for a bill where your property taxes are not going to go up for two years, and you would think, wow, that's wonderful. And then you think, well, wait a minute, whoa, wait a minute, what's going to happen to all the taxing bodies with no new money for two years? And that's going to include the city of Peoria for the first time.
Right.
Who wasn't on, or they were a home rule. Now, they're going to be affected.
And let's not be unclear about that. The individual property owner's individual tax bill may or may not come up or go down.
Yeah.
Which adds to the confusion.
Yeah. So...
As I understand it, too, the bill requires that there would be a commission or a group that would put together a solution to...
Yeah.
...new school funding. Now, I'm going to share something with you here. I happened to be cleaning out a bookcase this weekend and just happened to find, I have no idea why I was here, but it's dated, the Journal Star dated July 25, 1995, 20 years ago. Funding reforms still elude schools. State can't find way to lessen reliance on property taxes. There's clearly too much reliance on property taxes to fund education, but how can we balance an alternative which people will support? And this is a story about the inability of the legislature to come up with any alternative to property taxes for funding schools. And they've been thinking about this for 20 years, and my guess is, they'll think about it for another 20 unless we have something else change in Springfield.
Just one quick, one quick further explanation to what Mr. Cloyde said. The issue is in schools that the amount of money that a school district can generate depends on the property value that's inside the school district. So if you have a district, and I'm not going to name names, maybe a district that's very close to you in Peoria, that has a lot of property value in the school district, you know, without... know, without naming any names, they're probably in a separate situation than you. Because in their school district, they, they have an ordinately high amount of property taxes to draw property tax money from. And normally, that allows them to, uh, keep their rates a little bit lower because with all this property value, they can generate the same amount of money at a lower tax rate. Now, that doesn't seem fair. Doesn't seem American even to do that. But, that's the way it is. If you lived in most other modern countries in the world, the federal government runs the educational programs and everything's the same. It's all the same. When I was in high school, I went to school in Norway for a while. All the teachers got the same, everybody took the same test, everybody had the same textbooks, everything was the same. No difference. I'm not sure we liked that either, though, so.
Any questions, any other questions for Dr.?
I've taken up a lot of your time, but I'm willing to, you know, answer any questions.
Any questions at all? No? Okay, we do have a, uh.
I know you do.
Another, um, presentation on finances, so maybe you can.
Okay. I'll stick around for that one.
Yeah. Thank you. Okay. Our first quarter budget review.
Thank you, Dr. Phil.
Thank you, Dr. Phil.
I apologize, President Ross. Even knowing what was in it, I'm still a little stunned. I mean, there's a lot there.
Yeah.
The only good news that I could offer is next year is a leap year. So we have one extra day before March 1st hits.
Well, that only means that I won't turn a year older in February this year.
Uh, I, I like to use the analogy that looking at quarterly budget reports is akin to, uh, going up in an airplane, reaching altitude, making your adjustments, and then coming in, uh, at least at the proper airport, at the proper speed, uh, and the proper altimeter readings. So there were a couple of things I wanted to point out from you, at least, um, I'm going to go through the education fund. Uh, as most know, we have nine separate funds that we operate from, uh, the education fund being the largest piece. And then we go to operations and maintenance, our debt service fund, the transportation fund, as was mentioned earlier, our, our IMRF and social security funds, our capital, working cash, TORT, and then finally, life safety. There's eight, eight pages of data. I've handed them out to everybody, including the press, so I'll try to get through this as quickly as possible, just showing you some slight variances that I've highlighted. Mostly what I look at on a first review basis, uh, since we're three months into the year, it, it's a simple calculation that one over 12 equals 8.3. So we're looking at, to see variances or percentage of the year of about 24.9, meaning we're at least 25% of the year. So where I see a six, or likewise, a 32, those are dollar amounts that I want to look into and why they're so low or so high in relationship to where we should expect them to be towards budget. The one I pointed out on that top line, tuition, uh, that's billing, uh, that's obviously a billing issue, it's just a matter of timing to reconciling, uh, when those bills went out and when we get them. There shouldn't be any concern for us receiving them. And I wanted to point that out. Likewise, if you drop down a little bit and you see that our private facility tuition, actually, we received a little bit more of that comparatively than we did in the previous year. Going to the next page, nothing stands out to me that would really require concern. Just for your own note, though, a breakdown of our three main revenue sources for the education fund by percent. Local sources are 30%, state sources are 53, and federal sources are 17. Based on where we're at in the current, um, current year, we're showing that, uh, we're right, we're very close to where we should be, uh, for revenue receipt at that 22% level. And we're very close to where we were in the previous year. Likewise, we're showing that our expenses on a percentage basis and a dollar basis are down compared to the present year, or, I'm sorry, the previous year, uh, from both a percentage and a dollar point as well. Moving on to the building and grounds funds. I'm showing that our revenue is up, mostly related to the timing of property tax receipts, which is a major component of the O&M fund. I've also shown that we've, uh, booked an accelerated payment from the Peoria Public, Peoria Public Building Commission as compared, oh, I'm sorry, basically the same dollar as the previous year, but, uh, we're showing about the same as we were last year on revenues. We're up a little bit on the expenditures in the O&M fund, but again, this is a, a capital rely, uh, a, a capital reliant, a maintenance reliant fund, so generally, the dollars go where they have to go to make sure that we're sufficiently operating on a day-to-day basis. I'm going to skip debt service and go to transportation. If I can go back one, please. I note that we did receive a state transportation fund payment this year, where last year we did, we did not, in the same period compared, so, uh, yay for us. It's a good thing. It's in our bank, they can't come and take it back. So that's why you would see the 29% this year compared to last.
Don't count on it.
So far as we know, Mr. Floyd, they can't come take it back. Again, the expenses are up a little bit in relationship to the prior year, but, uh, again, this being typically a, a fund that responds to what we're presented with, going out throughout the year, making the necessary repairs. I still feel that within 25% is within, well within budget for the quarter. Those are your four, um, major, uh, transportation, or, I'm sorry, operation fund. I wanted to skip to page seven and just show you that, uh, if you go down to expenditures under TORT, you'll see that in purchased services, there is an $875,000 payment compared to the prior year of 1.024 million. Purchased services out of TORT is generally our liability in commercial insurance that we pay at the beginning of the fiscal year. That's why it's such a high dollar amount and we pay it out early, uh, just so we can generally receive those, uh, discounts that are offered by the carrier. It's one of those things that, the sooner you get a little bit less off. Yes, sir.
Does, does this reflect, uh, timing of payment, or does this reflect actual expense? In other words, is this something we've, is our liability cost, has it gone down?
That I would have to look into. I believe we approved at our last meeting, if not the meeting before, that our cost went down for the year.
Okay.
Based on the recommendation of the insurance committee.
Okay. And this is, this is all types of liability or, or just?
This is on the accrual basis through September 30th. Which is why I generally want to wait until the first meeting in October to present it to you.
Okay.
That gives staff the entire month to make all the appropriate bank reconciliations, have discussions with all of our buildings to make sure that their activity funds are up to date, and make sure that, if there are any questions of any bookings that need to be done in the interim, that this first quarter report shouldn't change by any material effect going forward.
Okay, thanks.
Yes, sir. Any other questions?
Other questions from Mr. Bush? Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
I, I have one other issue that I wanted to bring up since we're on the subject of finances, and that's, uh, the future city sewer outfall fees that will impact residential and commercial and institutional organizations in the city of Peoria for the payment, maintenance, and amortization of the cost of dealing with the combined sewer outfall issues for the city of Peoria, which is a legacy problem over decades and decades. And, uh, I've taken a look at the information that was provided by the One Water Committee that's working on this, and I don't know what they're going to recommend and what the city council's going to act on, but this could be a wide range of, uh, costs to the district because we have a million square feet of roofs, we probably have several million square feet of parking lots which are impermeable, and, uh, the fees are charged based on the number of square feet of impermeable surfaces and the runoff that goes into the stormwater system. And, uh, the high-end estimate is, is in the middle six figures that I've seen based on what I put together, but I won't use a number there, but we've had discussions with the city about what this will require of many, uh, organizations, and no organization will be exempt from it. There's already been a court test on this with the organization, I believe, in the Quad Cities, and, uh, they've held that this can be imposed on all organizations, whether they're tax-exempt or charitable or anything else. So, on top of all the other good news about the, the revenue, revenue side, we are going to be facing a substantial cost for sewer outfall fees, probably within the next 12 to 18 months.
Questions up on this issue? Okay, thank you, Mr. Floyd. I need an approval of the minutes from October 26, 2015.
So moved.
Would you please call the line?
Mrs. Butler?
Aye.
Mr. Floyd?
Aye.
Mrs. Kastig?
Stand.
Mrs. Jackson?
Pardon?
Mrs. Wolfman?
Aye.
Mr. Adler?
Aye.
Aye.
We are now at a place on the agenda that provides an opportunity for the members of the community who wish to address the board to do so. And as you know, we are all volunteers elected by you to oversee the development, implementation, and maintenance of a quality education for the students of District 150 schools. The board welcomes your comments and suggestions relating to this goal. Recognizing that we all have our First Amendment rights of free speech, we ask that your comments be focused on those issues within the board's authority. There are some issues we are not at liberty to discuss in public, such as personnel and other executive session topics. However, if you have a specific personal concern that needs to be addressed, we will get some, a staff person to help you. In addition, uh, board members are accessible outside of these meetings. Our phone numbers and emails are listed on the website, PSD150.org. We realize that three minutes may not be enough time for some of you to express your thoughts. We have, so we have installed a comment box. It's not red anymore now, it's wood. They keep changing on me. Now we have a permanent comment box installed for your convenience. We really do welcome your comments and, and encourage you. Some people may not want to stand up and say something, but they might put it in writing. So our board secretary will collect those and, uh, bring those to the attention of, uh, of the board members and administration and compile them to share, uh, with each of us. And when you are recognized, please come to the podium and state your name for our records. Each speaker has three minutes, and no one under the age of 18 may address the board unless accompanied by a parent, guardian, or teacher without the consent of the majority of the board. First on our list is Ms. Sharon Cruz.
The trend toward inflated grades started years ago. In the 1960s, all assignments, tests, and grading period, and semester averages were figured from 0 to 100. 70 was the lowest passing score. The next change came when all averages had to be on a 1 to 5 scale. The nuances of grades were gone. The worst change came when some teachers began to use the 1 to 5 scale instead of the 0 to 100 scale for grading papers. The 1 to 5 scale is a recipe for grade inflation. To further water down grades, we were told that the average of 2 As and 2 Bs had to be A, et cetera. Worse yet, 3 grading period Fs and a C on a final had to be a D average. My studies of the district's grades over the last five years show that Ds and Fs are relatively rare. Much to my surprise, a 2013 Washington Post article entitled "How to Detect Inflated Grades at Your School" suggests that C has become the new F. Much in this article describes what has been happening in District 150 and probably all over the country. Inflated report card grades lie to students and their parents, who consequently believe students are ready for the workplace or college. The latest report from Illinois shows that the majority of students are not college-ready. The article states that a comparison of AP test results with report card grades will reveal if there is grade inflation. One study says a 4 to 5 on an AP exam is equivalent to a high school A. A score of 3 is similar to a B, and a 2 is comparable to a signi, to a C. The article states that inflation is occurring if most report card grades are significantly higher than the AP test results. The article's conclusion agrees with what I discovered in researching last year's AP grades. Teachers of students who qualify for AP courses are not likely to give inflated grades because they would be embarrassed by the test results and would probably lose the AP class. I believe that's true in 150. Those grades are legitimate. However, the article states that administrators are placing unqualified students in AP classes, believing the challenge will be good for them even though few will score well on the AP tests. However, parents and students believe the inflated report card grades, and that has happened in District 150. AC tests and IB tests can also reveal inflated grades. Too often, teacher grades are used to please administrators and/or to reward students not to rate achievement. Inflated, inflated grades are cruel deceptions. Please let us lead the way in a return to higher standards, and let's save $10,000. We don't need a new superintendent research. We're happy.
Thank you, Ms. Cruz, for your comments. Next, uh, is Ms. Lana Myers, Myers? Lana M. Myers is what you have in your card.
Good evening again. Brett Elliott addressed this earlier, but I had this written up, so I still wanted to come forward. I think it's important enough. I'm Lana Myers. I'm vice president of Peoria Federation of Teachers and math teacher at Knoxville Center for Student Success. This past Thursday and Friday, I represented the Peoria Federation of Teachers at the TARN conference, Teacher Union Reform Network Conference in Downers Grove. The district sent a team of administrators, principals, union, and teacher leaders to this conference, and we also had two board of education members attend. I want to again say thank you sincerely to Ms. Ross and Ms. Jackson for attending on behalf of the Board of Ed. Two of the main focuses of this conference were SEL, social emotional learning, and as always, collaboration between union, administration, and school boards. It has been a long time since we've sent a team with all stakeholders present at TARN. I believe that it has been even longer time since our TARN team discussions have been open, honest, and safe. Thank you, team members. Our teamwork at this conference can be a true step towards real collaboration in District 150. Thank you.
Thank you.
Servino Sierra. Mr. Servino Sierra.
Servino Sierra, 1708 South Stanley on the South Side. I'd just like to say too that we don't have to, or isn't necessary, to spend that money to look for a superintendent when we have one now, interim superintendent, that's doing a good job, and she has the qualifications, and she intelligent enough to carry us through. Because I can feel the atmosphere in the whole district is a lot better. It's improved 100%. And I don't want to, you people might want to bring somebody else in, and we'll go back to where we started from. So, I hope you people decide to keep Dr. Carrat here. And also, you know me, I'm a death on discipline in our schools, and also the upkeep of physical plants, especially on the exterior. And Von Steuben over here needs a lot of work to take care of the exterior doors, and if you don't get to them pretty soon, you're going to have to replace them. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sierra. Mr. Edward Berry, did I say that right? Oh, Ed, how you doing? It's such a fancy writing on me.
Good evening. Ed Berry, 2816 Lynn Street, Peoria 61604. I'm here in my capacity as President of the Board of Trustees of the Peoria Public Library, and there are a couple other library board members in the audience, including Jeannie Williamson and Margaret Cousin, and our delightful Director of Libraries is here, Leanne Johnson, as well as our Assistant Director, Roberta Kostowski, and I always mispronounce that, sorry. I'm going to be super brief here. We have not had a chance to, sort of, under the context of our intergovernmental agreement with the school district, we haven't had a chance to sort of formally say hello to your new superintendent and your new board president. So, we really are here just tonight to sort of say hello to those two new officials, so to speak, and to thank you for the ongoing collaboration that we have as a part of this intergovernmental agreement. I'm going to turn the microphone, if I may, over to Jeannie, who is just going to say a few things about, and I believe she filled out a card, about some of those collaborations so that you're aware of them. And I would just extend one invitation in closing. During the next 12 months, we'd be delighted if we could have a joint library board, school board meeting, and/or perhaps have a school board, host a school board meeting at maybe our main library, if that could, we explore that possibility, because we'd like to enter or welcome you into our home as part of, again, this intergovernmental agreement. Last recognition is our library board member emeritus, Mike McKenzie.
Ms. Jeannie Williams.
Right. First and foremost, we would like to welcome back Dr. Carrat to District 150, and we wish you great success. We have had a long list of collaborative activities that have taken place over the last two years between the Peoria Public Library System and District 150. I'm only going to highlight a few of those with you this evening. Number one, our collaborative goal has been to get every District 150 student a library card, even if he or she resides outside of our library system boundaries, such as the students in the West Side of Peoria. Our goal is for us to have 100% of our students with library cards. Number two, we have a bookmobile which stops at numerous 150 schools. In fact, seven schools are on our regular bookmobile's route. Number three, and this is my favorite, each District 150 teacher or library manager can receive a teacher library card, which allows them to check out up to 40 items at a time and to retain those items for six weeks. This is perfect if a teacher is working on a project or a unit and needs materials from our libraries. Number four, our library staff has had joint meetings with the 150 library staff, and we've had great exchanges and great results as a result of those meetings. Number five, the 150 students participate in our Peoria Reads programs as well as our summer reading extravaganzas. Number six, as District 150 sent home your mass back-to-school mailing, you included a featured full-page information report about the Peoria Public Libraries, and for that, we truly thank you. Our joint collaborative working relationship has served the students in our city and the school system. We appreciate your willingness to be our partner from which the students and the teachers have benefited. At your place this evening, I think Chris put a packet which has many, many other collaborative ideas that we have had and shared, so we shared that with you this evening. Thank you for having us.
Thank you. Mr. Terry Napp?
Yes, I would hope that someone tonight would announce who was responsible for bringing Mr. Phillips here. I thought it was excellent, you know, outstanding presentation. I would like to also thank Dr. Carrat for bringing Dr. Lyman here last, last board meeting. I was totally impressed with her thoughts on the children and brain activity, and more importantly, I think it's very important to the board to look into what she was talking about. She had some things that were very important. I know the closing of Woodruff High School, and I know you get tired of hearing me talk about that, but five years ago, I told you about the girl across the street from Woodruff who was going to be a senior that went to Manuel to try out for cheerleading, and she was a cheerleader three years at Woodruff and was not accepted at Manuel as a cheerleader. She was so embarrassed that she, and I told this story before, she had to go live with her grandmother in her west so she could go to Richwoods. Only to go to Richwoods the first day of school with a camisole on, 100 girls were dismissed from class the first day, and everybody got to go back when two of the influential parents came and got 99 students back in. She was the only student kept from going to class the first day because, as the dean told her, her breasts were too big. I shared that with you before. You know, just a tragedy for that young lady. She went on, didn't go to homecoming dance, didn't go to prom, didn't do anything. It was a disaster. She's totally dismantled today because of that experience. That's one person at Woodruff who lived right across the street from Woodruff out the back door. And when we closed Woodruff, that was a tragedy. It's still a tragedy for those kids that are being bussed out of the North End all over town early in the morning. You know, it's just ridiculous. I don't know how you remedy that, but I know, going back to Dr. Lyman, that it had something to do with all those kids' brains and final analysis, and I think you should do the research to find out how successful these kids have been or not been at Manuel and Central and Richwoods after their transfers. The 100 young students, elementary students that were bussed to Charter Oak, the 100 students that were bussed to Lindbergh. There should be research done as to how successful those kids have been or have not been. I know that Lindbergh's, excuse me, Charter Oak's scores went from 28th in the state to 149th in the state. That shows something. I mean, I would be distressed. I don't know if you're distressed. It sure distresses me as a taxpayer. It's very important also that you understand what Dr. Lyman was saying relative to mobility. Mobility, until we do something with PHA coming up with these contracts every month of the year, instead of coming up with them in the summer when they have to move one time, these students moving from school to school in the middle of the year is totally disruptive for them and others. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Napp. Dr. Carrat, do you have any response to presentations? By the way, Dr. Carrat invited Dr. Smith, Dr. Phillips to come in and speak. He and, and Mr. Chloe, she and Mr. Chloe. Do you have any response to any of the audience presentations?
Well, I just wanted to thank the union, particularly Mr. Atkins Dutrow for inviting me to attend the Albert Shanker Institute in Washington, DC. I was actually a guest of the union for two days, Wednesday and Thursday. They worked us to death, but the topics were aligned with the things that we're thinking about. We talked a lot about our strategic plan, and they're similar to what you experienced at the TERN Conference in Downers Grove. A lot of emphasis on social and emotional learning. It's nice to see the teachers and the teacher union really taking charge of this idea. So, Jeff and I had a, we spent a lot of time working together, brainstorming, made a lot of good contacts, but we were just really pleased. Everything we're doing in our district is in line with what they're focused on in Washington, social-emotional, alternative ways. Ms. Butler, I have some things for you. Alternative ways for expulsion, suspension, made some great contacts, were able to identify matrix and items to sort of measure the progress that we're making, so matrices and strategic plan. I don't know, Mr. Atkins Dutrow, if you'd like to add to that, but thank you for inviting me, and I learned a lot and received some great, great information that I was able to share with my team.
And I mentioned maybe that we were there with, we were probably the smallest city by far, but we're kind of making a name for ourselves along those lines. We're being invited to sit at a table with the big dogs, if you will, like San Diego, New York, et cetera, et cetera. So, yeah, great conference, and we appreciate you going with me. Thank you.
You're welcome. And in terms of Von Steuben, we'll take a look at those doors. We're always interested in getting ideas, and I'll definitely look into that. Maintenance is very, very important for us, so thank you, Mr. Sierra. The library, we'll continue to work with them. I will, I'll follow up on the joint meeting that they requested. They do great work for our kids in our community, the summer reading program, Peoria Reads, the library cards, all of the services that they provide to our district, to our teachers, to our kids, their families. So, we'll definitely, they're a great partner. Mr. Napp's topic, you know, the points he made regarding brain activity and, this is a focus of ours, so we'll continue to, this falls on the SEL, so it's, it's, it's in line with what we are, what we are focused on, and Ms. Cruz's topic regarding inflated grades. We are, we're focused on AP. I don't know if you heard that colleges are now required to provide credits to students who have taken AP classes and they've gotten a three, or four, or a five, and I did read the article quickly, so a three is equivalent, a five is equivalent to an A, a four is equivalent to a B, a three is equivalent to a C, and that's, you're right, that's very, very-
And I really do believe that our AP classes have followed those rules.
It's the other ones. And I, actually, I had a meeting with our union this morning, Mr. Dutrow and a quick one, and Ms. Strong, and we talked about reassembling that grading committee, is that correct? Mr. Dutrow, so we, thank you, Ms. Cruz, we're having discussions about that.
Okay, thank you. Under information items, we've already covered number one. Number two would be the City of Peoria Police Youth Explorers Program. Officer Duncan? I know you've been sitting a long time. Thank you all for your patience. I appreciate it.
No, no problem at all. I said, man, I asked Chief Collins, I said, you guys need some snacks or something in here.
Or something to drink or something.
I'll be, I'll be really quick, because I know your time, and I'm starving, but I appreciate Dr. Carrat for allowing me to be able to come speak to you guys, just to give some information in reference to the Police Explorers Program, for if you didn't know it, if you wanted to pass it on as well. I'll give you the past, present, and future of it, and it'd be really brief. First, the program is for ages 14 to 21 years old. They actually have to have graduated from grade school, but in their year, their eighth grade year, when they're going into their freshman year, they can actually join the police department at that point. And the Police Explorers is a program that, it started through Boy Scouts of America, it's still a branch of Boy Scouts of America. The purpose of the program is to teach young youth about anyone who has any interest in law enforcement, to give them an overview of what it's like to be a police officer. One thing we did, we actually took that part, and we give them that, every piece of training that the police officers get, these young explorers get every part of it, from shooting, building searches, traffic stops, everything. But we tried to take it a little further. You know, our goal is to make our homegrown officers, so the purpose of it is to make more of a community service officer, and that's the difference we do from other posts throughout the country. There's hundreds of posts, firemen posts, AMT posts, and law enforcement posts all over the United States, but the thing that we do different from them is, we emphasize more of community service. We think of what you see in the media, these type of things can be dissolved if the mindset of the officers change. So, the purpose of what we're doing is trying to get them more engaged in the community through projects in the community, beautification projects, as well as educating them and bringing people in from the community to speak to them as well. The past of the Police Department Explorers, it lied dormant for 20 years until two years ago, Chief Edelman, Assistant Chief Edelman brought it back. For those who didn't know, Assistant Chief Edelman went to Richwoods High School, where he was part of the Explorers Program during that time. Actually, Chief Collins was actually his advisor while he was in the program. When he graduated from the program, he went to be a cadet with the Peoria Police Department, and from at that point, he went on to ICC, graduated from ICC, and started back with the Peoria Patrol and rolled through the ranks. And I say that because he actually said that, when he went through the program from the Explorers, he knew what it brought to the young men and women, so that's why he wanted to bring it back up when he got in the position that he is in now. Currently, right now, in the program, the president of the program, we actually have, we have four students from Central, four students from Richwoods, two from Manuel, three from Dunlap, five at ICC, and then we have about four or five in other colleges. We meet every Tuesday at 6:00 PM. We meet for two hours. During that time, we just do different variety of the training. We use the weekends and other days of the week, we have a tutoring day, as well as the Community Events Day. The future of the program, which we would like to see, as Chief Macklin behind me said, he'd like to see, like, one of our things up on this board, to where the police department and fire department can actually come and work together and be in the schools, and to have some type of program in the schools as well to help these students to stay on track, and then eventually, when they graduate from the high schools, to start their career at that point in these jobs and in these fields. Good-paying field. One thing I would say, I graduated in 95 from Manuel High School, and I always wanted to be the police. If there was a program like this going on in 95 when I was there, I still was blessed by God to be able to make it to where I'm at, but there was a lot of decisions I probably would not have made, bad decisions, being part of something that I wanted to be. So, I think the program is very productive. We're hoping as well, as Chief Collins had developed a pilot program that he did last year at Calvin Coolidge, and this program was for junior police, and basically it was for middle school, because there's nothing there for middle schools if the kids want to be involved with the police. So, to take that program and to make it go bigger, and then from middle school to high school to the police department, and from the Police Department Explorers Program to actually on the job. You're more than welcome on any Tuesday at 6 o'clock to come down to the police station. We always need role players. If you want to come in, be a role player, then get handcuffed or shot with some paintball guns. We're more than happy to help you, but it's an excellent program. I really stand by it strong. Hopefully, we can get something in the schools within the next future, you know, to really benefit a lot of these kids.
Great.
Thank you.
Any questions of Officer Duncan?
Yeah, let's do it. Let's meet with our chief curriculum, and it's true, we can do it, we need to do it.
Yes, ma'am.
So, let's do it, officer.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. All right, thanks a lot.
Thank you. Now, update on, I'm sorry, you had a question?
That's all right. I didn't have a question. Officer Duncan? You know, aside from all that he talked about, this is an excellent program as mentors. There are police officers and other people in the community that are mentors to these young men, but the really great thing about this is, is that once they turn right age, they can become police officers. And the salaries are very, very good salaries, even starting. So, our children are in a position to really take off and do some things for the community. So, I certainly hope, and I know you will, that we can really work together to get our kids in those- to get our kids in those programs, those kids that are maybe not going to school right away. Because most police officers, when they get on the force, they end up with their degrees. So I think we ought to really look at this for our children.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Oh, thank you.
We'll let you go ahead and eat dinner now. Okay, update on Qualtrics Research Suite, Dr. Zalinski.
You have a presentation?
I do. A very, very short presentation.
Five slides. Very brief. Five slides.
All right, thank you. Good evening. I have a very brief presentation, an update on two software programs that I believe would greatly enhance our ability to make database decisions and do research in the district. Okay, so we're in that strategic planning process. And strategic planning requires enhanced data collection and analysis methods that utilize large, complex longitudinal data sets. At this time, however, the district is not equipped to collect or analyze this type of data. And the ability to collect and analyze this kind of data would greatly enhance our ability to make timely database decisions to improve student and district outcomes. So two software programs have been identified to solve this problem. First, Qualtrics Research Suite provides the district with the ability to conduct large-scale research and evaluation projects to improve safety, climate, and cohesion within the district. And second, SAS Analytics Pro provides the district with the ability to organize and review large, complex data tables and conduct statistical analyses. Currently, we do not have any statistical analysis software that allow us to do any type of statistical analysis within the district. Okay, so currently, we collect our district data using a program called Skyward. So Skyward provides users a stagnant set of reporting tools and locks the data behind a limited user interface. So the user interface does not allow for statistical analyses such as correlations and regression analyses that are needed, to answer questions about the relationships between variables. So if we really want to look at the relationships between the variables that we're collecting, these important ideas and concepts and the programs and the different characteristics of our district, we really need the ability to conduct statistical analyses. And so SAS Analytics Pro, with access to something called an open database connectivity interface, will allow us access to that data that's currently locked behind Skyward. So if you're familiar with things like SQL Server, so database systems, so all computers have the SQL Server database system running in the background, but we need an interface to be able to pull those data tables into something like SAS Analytics Pro, so we can actually do those statistical analyses. Currently, we don't have a way to take those large data tables, that raw data, out of Skyward and into any type of interface that allows us to do those types of statistical analyses and investigations. In addition, Qualtrics is a dynamic data source that's going to allow the district to actively collect data. So it's, in very simple terms, it's a souped-up survey research platform, but it has many, many other opportunities for data collection beyond this concept of surveys. So some of the examples of data collection include collecting stakeholder feedback, conducting curriculum audits, conducting large-scale program evaluations, distributing climate surveys, collecting perceptual data, and conducting student screenings to identify our students like our high-ability learners. So these are all examples of data that we need to support our strategic planning within the district. So both software programs are going to also, both SAS and Qualtrics, allow the creation of interactive reporting dashboards. And I know that that's something that we'd really like to move in the direction of, is allowing our community members to look at our data, to interact with our data. And these are two platforms that would make that process a reality. There's also questions about, so who are using these software programs? So these are two really world-renowned software programs that are at the top of their game. Qualtrics is used by almost every university in the United States. I actually think they are used by every university in the United States and abroad. They're also now have a really innovative K-12 focus and they're working, this is just a sample of some of the school districts across the country, namely, you know, I'd like to point out Chicago Public Schools that is using the software as well. And I've spoken with representatives from some of these school districts and done some research, and they've done some really impressive things with these softwares that I think we could follow in the footsteps of and really be leaders in not only Illinois but the country in how we collect and utilize our data to make decisions and to do research in our district. So I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have about these two software programs.
Questions from anyone? You?
You go.
Mr. Cloyde?
You go.
Oh, I didn't.
I was just going to make a comment that I know that I personally make several data requests every month or so, which I imagine takes a lot of staff time. I try to minimize it. But I think the ability to have a tool that's accessible to our community and also to internally, to pull that data on our own and kind of build conclusions could really be a way to decouple that staff dependency.
I would agree.
I would just add that the insight that you gain from this type of analysis is just incredibly valuable and we need to do this. The only question I have is, is there any ability to cross-link with like the City of Peoria's GIS system for things like boundaries and other things such as demographics?
So if we have access to a database, anything that's in any kind of database that uses SQL Server, we can access that through that ODBC interface. So yes, if we would have access to data, raw data in a data table, we should be able to pull that into SAS.
Okay. And specifically, I'm thinking about the issue of mobility and the rental properties, which I believe the city has a complete data file on all registered rental properties in the city. And I would think that we could find a very, very interesting piece of work to be done to identify what is the relationship between mobility and rental properties in the City of Peoria.
Yep. I would agree. As long as I have access to those raw data tables, so not frequency data, but the raw data, you know, the opportunities are really boundless to what we can do in areas of multi-level modeling, hierarchical linear modeling, longitudinal linear modeling.
The city has expressed their willingness to work with us on those issues. So I think there's a big opportunity there once you get that up and running.
I agree. Thanks for reminding us, Mr. Cloyde. And I'll connect you with Patrick and Eurich. He's willing to work with us once we, the board approves the software. And I really thank the board for asking questions and being curious. And then we can share with you. The goal is to be transparent. So thanks. Great job, Doctor.
Thank you very much.
Nobody has any other questions? Okay. Intervention, interventionist smart goals.
Tonight is PowerPoint night.
Oh, they have a PowerPoint too? Okay.
I'm not sure how many slides this one.
So my name is Crystal Monast.
And I'm Rhonda Zimmerman.
We're the interventionists at Lincoln K-8 School. We were asked to come tonight and talk about how we provide coaching and kind of how we coordinate the intervention programs at our school.
So basically, what that means is that we're talking about the RTI system, where we respond to intervention. And basically, this response to intervention just means that we're going to take and look at the students based on where they're achieving at, okay? And Level 1 or Tier 1 is for all students. That would be their core instruction. That's going on in every classroom, okay? The students that aren't making progress with that core instruction or not meeting grade level expectations, we take to Tier 2, which means that we're going to have about 20% of our students in the Tier 2 that have additional information and programs and academic interventions to help them make their grade level expectations. After Tier 2, if they're still not making the progress they needed, then we'll move those handful of students up to a Tier 3. So that's the way it goes. But there's a lot involved in getting that there.
So for the coaching aspect of it, we kind of broke it down into the three categories. The first one is professional development. So what kinds of professional developments we provide for our staff? And these might be whole group staff meetings, or they could be grade level meetings that we do with the grade level teams. So we try to make sure the very first thing that we do at the beginning of the year is make sure that teachers understand that RTI process and what those three different tiered levels really mean. We might also provide professional development on knowing how to complete the required documentation because there is some documentation involved with each of the different levels. And we might provide instruction on how to set appropriate goals for their intervention groups. And then we would also provide coaching and for classroom teachers to set up Tier 2 groups. So we use data to determine the needs of individual students and establish those small groups for reading and math. We help teachers make a schedule that's going to work for them. And we use research-based curriculum to provide the interventions, or we help show teachers what types of research-based intervention curriculum is available. Then we also provide coaching with progress monitoring. So we want to make sure our teachers are using the appropriate progress monitoring tools. And progress monitoring means that after a period of time, usually within two, after about two weeks of giving an intervention, we want to check the status of that group and see if they're making progress with that particular skill. We want to make sure that that's done with fidelity. So like I said, usually about every two weeks for the Tier 2 groups, and if it's a Tier 3 group, usually weekly. And then after six weeks, we'll come together as a grade level team and talk about the results of our intervention groups and determine whether it's been successful or not.
Okay. In coordinating the RTI protocols, we, at the very beginning of the school year, we haven't done any testing. All the scores we have from the students are from the previous year. But what we do want to do first is to ensure that any interventions that were put in place the previous year are automatically started before any testing, so we're not waiting around for scores. If they were in Tier 2 the year before, or they were in Tier 3 the year before, we need to automatically get them into there. So that's the first thing that we do. So we get them in as soon as possible. We provide teachers with the information about their new students, and if they were in interventions in the previous year. And then we instruct the teachers to check the curriculum files to make sure that they've got any background information on that student that they need.
So then the next step kind of comes into place after all of our beginning of the year testing is complete. That's usually towards the end of September, beginning of October. And once we have all that data, we will come together as a grade level team and look to see which kids did not achieve grade level expectation, or which students excelled above grade level expectations and determine, you know, which students need interventions, or even which students need enrichment. And I put on there that for the most part, we use DIBELS and NWA. Those are our two big assessment pieces that we look at the most. Then, based on what we've decided, looking at that data, we will form our groups and determine when and how often the interventions are going to occur, how often these groups are going to meet. We provide teachers with research-based curriculum choices that they can use with their intervention groups or with their enrichment groups.
Okay. And after that, then we've got the groups all set up, we've got the paperwork on. So it's basically documentation, okay? Because we have to be able to tell people, whether it's parents or future teachers or other schools, what they've done in the past. So we keep the documentation, we fill out the paperwork. So we train the teachers on how to do that. The teachers that are doing the interventions are required to upkeep that. So, you know, after the end of a six-week program, we're going to go back to that document and say, hey, this is where they achieved at. You know, I have 10 students in this group, and eight of them met the expectations of growth for that group, but two didn't. Okay? So we need that documentation to tell us whether that intervention is actually working or not. Now, those eight that met, we're probably going to keep that intervention in place. But the two that did not meet, we're going to move into, or probably talk about in our grade level team meetings, moving them into a Tier 3 intervention if they're not making much progress there. Okay? If they're not growing and they're not doing what everybody else is doing, that means we need to step up one step further for them.
Or we might talk about what could we do differently? Can we modify the, this intervention that we are providing for these two particular kids? Because maybe it's working for eight, but maybe these two need something different. So we would either modify or, like she said, think about whether we need to move into Tier 3. And if we've modified a couple times and they're still, you know, not making gains, we typically hold a problem-solving meeting. And there's a team at our school called the Problem-Solving Team where we would make those decisions. So we also, like I said earlier, we want to make sure that teachers are keeping up with that progress monitoring because just like Ms. Zimmerman said, the documentation is important, so are the results of the progress monitoring because that's what we're going to use to determine if they are making success in their intervention groups.
Okay. So once the interventions are placed, as we said earlier, we basically wait after three data points, which would be about six weeks of interventions, and look at the progress monitoring to see what it shows, okay? Whether they're growing within the intervention, whether they're not making progress, and the success is based on the each student's progress. So yes, if we say that, you know, six of the students made progress, but four didn't, okay? Part of it may just be the intervention that we actually put in place. So that's something we would have to talk about. So we would problem-solve as a grade level team for those students that aren't showing improvement. And if the whole group isn't, or a big part of the group isn't, we're going to have to change that intervention and then alter or modify it as needed. Oops. That was it?
Yeah. So that's our RTI in a nutshell.
All right.[1661.26][1661.26][applause] Thank you. Any questions of, oh, you think you can do it this time? Of Ms. Zimmerman and Ms. Monast. Any questions from any board members? No? Okay. Okay. Report of request under the Freedom of Information Act.
Again, thank you.
And the status of such report.
Thank you, President Ross. Again, thank you, Mrs. Zimmerman and Ms. Monast, for your efforts. We really appreciate that. And thanks for hanging out with us. I know it's been long. I apologize. For your report for today, there are two categories. One is the new request status. Since our last board meeting on October 22nd, we received seven new Freedom of Information Act requests. And out of these seven, four were filled. And the second category is pending request status. There are four pending requests noted. There were four noted on October 26th. And out of the four, two were filled. And the running total is $3,465.89 to fetch these reports.
Thank you, Dr. Karat. Proposed expenditures over $2,500. Any questions? From board members? No? No reports? No questions?
Oh, no. I was just going to say thank you. I didn't see anything out of ordinary or unusual. But if you did have questions, I would certainly be available to ask.
Okay. All right. Consent agenda. Mr. Cloyde, would you?
Thank you, Madam President. The consent agenda this evening consists of the following. Number one, gifts to the school district. This meeting, $200. And year-to-date, $45,000.
on Tuesday, December 8, 2015, per Board Policy 6:240. Students will be attending the Warriors versus Pacers game to show appreciation for Mr. Livingston's support to Peoria High. The trip expense will be paid for per person, which includes the price of ticket and bus ride. No student will be denied participation for inability to pay. Number six, field trip approval. Richwoods High School senior trip. Proposed action is that the Board of Education approve the field trip for seniors from Richwoods High School per Board Policy 6:240. Students will travel to Gurnee, Illinois on May 14, 2016, participating in the annual senior class trip, overnight event for high school seniors hosted by Great America. No student will be denied participation for inability to pay. Item number seven, family core resource coordinator for TreeWinn, first semester, FY16. Proposed action is that the Board of Education enter into a contract with Family Core to add one FTE resource coordinator at TreeWinn School. The cost is $13,377.15. The remainder of the first semester to be covered with donated funds. The district will include second semester costs for the position in our Title I amendment. Any remaining contributions will be used for the support of the TreeWinn Family Core program. Item number eight, Qualtrics. Proposed action is that the Board of Education enter into an agreement with Qualtrics. Our strategic plan identifies a need for enhanced data collection and analysis using large, complex longitudinal data sets. At this time, the district is not equipped to collect or analyze this type of data that would greatly enhance our ability to make timely database decisions to improve student and district outcomes. Two software programs are proposed to address this problem. The first software program is Qualtrics Research Suite. The cost of a one-year license for Qualtrics Research Suite is $13,000 for unlimited users and surveys. Item number nine, SAS. Proposed action is that the Board of Education enter into an agreement with SAS. Our strategic plan identifies a need for enhanced data collection and analysis using large, complex longitudinal data sets. At this time, the district is not equipped to collect or analyze this type of data that would greatly enhance our ability to make timely database decisions to improve student and district outcomes. Two software programs are proposed to address this problem. The first software program is Qualtrics Research Suite. The cost of a one-year license for Qualtrics Research Suite is $13,000 for unlimited users and surveys. Item number nine, SAS. Proposed action is that the Board of Education enter into an agreement with SAS. Our strategic plan identifies a need for enhanced data collection and analysis using large, complex longitudinal data sets. At this time, the district is not equipped to collect or analyze this type of data that would greatly enhance our ability to make timely database decisions to improve student and district outcomes. Two software programs are proposed to address this problem. The second software program is SAS Analytics Pro. The cost of a one-year license for SAS Analytics Pro is $3,800, and the annual renewal fee is $1,180. And that, Madam President, concludes the consent agenda for this evening.
Thank you. Are there any agenda items the board member would like to pull for a separate vote?
I would like to have number three, the human resources report, pulled for a separate vote.
Any others? May I have a motion to accept the?
I would move the approval of the consent agenda with the exception of item three. Second.
Okay. Any discussion on any of the items other than three? No? Would you please call the roll?
Mrs. Butler.
Aye.
Mr. Cloy.
Aye.
Mrs. Koszik, aye.
Mrs. Jackson, aye.
Mrs. Wolfmeier, aye.
Mr. Adler.
Aye.
Item three?
I would move approval of item number three, the human resources report. Second.
Comments? Questions? Okay, no comments or other questions? Could you call the roll, please?
Mrs. Butler.
Nay.
Mr. Cloy.
Aye.
Mrs. Koszik, aye.
Mrs. Jackson, aye.
Mrs. Wolfmeier, aye.
Mr. Adler.
Aye.
Mrs. Ross.
Aye. Item three?
I would move approval of item number three, the human resources report. Second.
Comments? Questions? Okay, no comments or other questions? Could you call the roll, please?
Mrs. Butler.
Nay.
Mr. Cloy.
Aye.
Mrs. Koszik, aye.
Mrs. Jackson, aye.
Mrs. Wolfmeier, aye.
Mr. Adler.
Aye.
Mrs. Ross.
Aye. Deliberation agenda. Number 10 is the Illinois Association of School Boards Superintendent Search Contract.
Madam President, I would move that this item be tabled.
Is there a second? No, just that one. We're just on number 10 now. Advice?
I believe a motion to table is not required.
I didn't think so, but it does require a vote either way.
Point of order, Madam President. What is the period of time for tabling a motion and this consideration?
I would like to have a?
No, this is, for what duration? It's not the content, it's for what time period?
I was just telling you. I would like to have it tabled until our next board meeting.
Is that Monday, or are there two weeks for Monday?
We have a special meeting coming up on the 16th.
Right. That's what I'm referring to.
But I'm not sure if we could. We may be able to add it to the special meeting. Just not sure what the rules and rights are on that.
You could have to attend the first question.
Were you looking at the special meeting on the 16th, or the next board, regular board?
I was, I'm thinking of the regular board meeting.
Which is?
23rd.
The 23rd. Okay.
Madam President, I would propose a substitute motion that we approve item number 10.
Second.
I believe that the motion to table takes precedence over?
It does.
Could you cite your authority on that, Counselor?
I believe it's Robert's Rules of?
It does.
Exactly what does it say?
I don't have it with me.
Then I would insist that we have the exact description of it, or I would insist that we go to the motion.
It does take precedent.
I would like to hear it quoted.
I'd have to go back to my office and?
If we have to do that, that's fine, but I want to hear it. It's a point of order, and if it?
Do you want to take a short break while I do that?
I would like to know that. As a matter of parliamentary procedure, if we have an item that's to be tabled, and there's another substitute motion offered?
Well, there would be a motion on the vote to table, and if the motion passes and it's tabled, if it fails, then it goes to the main motion.
There hasn't been a motion yet to approve it.
You just made a motion, you called it a substitute motion.
Yes.
But it goes to the merits of the proposal.
All right, let's vote on it.
I'm not sure if we want to take a?
Let's vote on the proposal to table. I'll let you off the hook on that.
Well?
I won't withdraw my motion, you can do what you want with it, but I won't withdraw my motion.
Well, you can go to the motion to table, and if it fails, then you can just make your main motion again, and?
Okay.
And debate it.
Okay. So we need a vote for the tabling of the motion?
Yes, as I understand it, the motion to table until the meeting on the 23rd.
Until the meeting on the 23rd.
Is there discussion on that?
We have a motion, and we can have discussion. Before the vote.
I would suggest that we have to make a decision here, and to delay this another two weeks is deleterious, and it's inappropriate for the timing of what we're trying to accomplish here.
I guess, I would like to have more discussion about it, which means that I just need more time to talk about it, and I think the board needs more time to discuss it. And so I stand by my motion.
Any other discussion? Would you please call the roll?
Let's make sure we understand what we're voting on here.
We're voting on the, why don't you state what we're voting on?
I didn't make the motion.
We're voting on the table.
Tabling the motion until the 23rd, I thought that was what we were voting on first.
Okay.
Mrs. Butler.
Nay.
Mr. Cloy.
No.
Mrs. Koszik, aye.
Mrs. Jackson, aye.
Mrs. Wolfmeier, no.
Mr. Adler.
No.
Mrs. Ross.
Aye. So the motion fails to table.
Madam President, I would move the approval of item number 10. Second.
Any discussion? Any further discussion?
I would add to that comment earlier, that if we are going to approach this, time is of the essence here. And it does not, by taking this action, this does not mean we are rejecting or accepting the current interim superintendent. What it means is, we're embarking on a process that says the board is going to take seriously its responsibility to be transparent about how it chooses its leadership. And for that reason, I support this, knowing that the outcome may be the status quo. But at the same time, I think it provides us the opportunity to have a good discussion, a good thought process, and an opportunity to demonstrate that we're willing to do this in an open and transparent manner. So therefore, I support it.
Any other comments?
And Mr. Cloy, it's not that, it's not that I do not agree. I agree along with Mrs. Jackson. I agree with Ms. Jackson, Mrs. Jackson. I would just like to have more discussion on it. I do understand the process. I mean, it's, I realize the urgency of what we need to do because of the timing, but if I am not 100% comfortable, then I cannot, in all honesty, vote on something. And so that's the reason that I'm saying I'm agreeing to, let's just table it.
Any other comments? Ms. Wolfmeier?
And I'd also like to say that deciding to do a search for superintendent is not at all a reflection on Dr. Karat. I certainly hope you don't take it as a negative. I think, I mean, I totally expect that you will apply through the search, and it will give you an opportunity to show the board and the community even more what you're accomplishing, what you can do. I certainly think you will have a leg up on anyone that would also apply. But I will tell you, I have had people in the community ask me, are we going to go through the process? And it's not like this hasn't happened before. We've had sitting superintendents before who weren't even interims, whose contract was up, and we did a search, and wound up hiring that same person again, because it showed us that we did absolutely have the best person for the job. So I don't hope you don't take this as a negative at all. I think it will be an asset for you to be able to have the opportunity to really shine if there are any other candidates. So that's why, it's the process that I think some people are expecting.
Any other comments? Mr. Adler.
Thank you, Mrs. Ross. I'll just share a little bit with the public of something I shared with the board before. I think we have, just given the context of some of the conversations we've had tonight, we have very large challenges ahead of us. And my expectation is that in the choosing of our, you know, our highest-employed leader of the district, I want to give them every amount of tailwind possible going into the challenges that we see in the next 10 years. And my hope is that it's that kind of legacy role that we're choosing here. And so in regards to that, I feel very strongly about making this open, transparent, and community-involved, full well knowing that Dr. Karat has outperformed even my expectations from when we originally brought her on. I have no doubt that she will be in the pool of folks that are in high consideration for this job. I think it's just important that, as we ask the public for, to trust our judgment as we put somebody in that role, to hit the ground running this summer, that we also defer back to the public to validate our choice, or to pick a different path. So that's why I'll be supporting this motion.
Any other comments? Ms. Jackson?
It's not a big thing, it's a huge thing. And I say that because we have a lot to do to move forward, to do the things we need to do, to take care of what we, what our job is, and that's to make sure our kids are doing, are learning and doing all the things that they need to do. We also need to listen to our teachers, and what they say, and how they feel about what's going on in this system right now. And I'm going to be really opposed to bringing someone from outside in this system. We've tried that a lot, and it really hasn't worked. So I believe that we ought to, we ought to look at all aspects of this thing. It is too important, the superintendent's lot is too important, to start looking at people from outside that don't know this district, doesn't know this city, doesn't know what's going on in our system. And right now, from what I'm hearing, not only from the teachers, from parents, from community people, from our huge stakeholders, that they are very pleased with what's going on, that the communication level has come back, things are being tied up, and if we don't sit down and talk about this in a real way, and look at something else, we're going to be right back where we were. And I don't want to go back there. I think we owe our children more than that. So I believe we need the time to talk about it. And when you rush into things, that's what you get. And I'm not willing to do that. So you can smile if you want to, and you can disagree if you want to, I have that right. I have the right to say what I think. And I will say what I think, especially because of our children, because of making sure our teachers get what they need, and what they're doing is what needs to happen for our children. So I'm going to stick to what I said. If the vote goes any other way, that's fine, but you need to know what I'm thinking about. And I'm not playing about the kids, because I think it's too important now.
Ms. Koszik?
I guess my question would be, with the presentation this evening, from the Illinois Association of School Boards, is who actually, who actually sets the guidelines for what we want? We have a, we have a timeline in which he says that he does what he does. Okay, however, like he said, like the, we employ, we employ the consultant. He just says November 2015. Okay? So you're still within your guidelines if it goes the other direction. So who sets those parameters? Who says that, okay, we want you to look at 50 people, we want you to look at 40, 30, 20?
The board sets those parameters.
Okay, so the number of people that we set is going to decrease or increase the timeline. Okay? So I think that if the board, if it is the pleasure of this board, and they decide to go with a search, then there's still plenty of time, based on the timeline that he gave us. We're still within December. And to go forward, to go forward without, with a vote, and people like myself still have questions, I think is ludicrous, because I'm not, there is, there are questions that I have, and 15 minutes of discussion is definitely not enough discussion, as far as I'm concerned, to make a decision of this magnitude. And I personally will not be rushed into something if I don't agree with it. So as of right now, I'm still standing by what I say. Thank you.
Any other comments? Okay, I'll just keep my opinions to myself. Would you please call the roll?
Mrs. Butler.
Aye.
I'm sorry, this is for?
The search. The search.
For them to do the search, yes. The original motion.
No, the original motion was tabled.
This is the main?
This is the main.
The main motion, that number 10.
Mrs. Butler.
Aye.
Mr. Cloy.
Aye.
Mrs. Koszik.
Aye.
Mrs. Jackson.
Nay.
Mrs. Wolfmeier.
No.
Mr. Adler.
No.
Mrs. Ross.
Aye. So the motion fails to table.
Madam President, I would move the approval of item number 10. Second.
Any discussion? Any further discussion?
I would add to that comment earlier, that if we are going to approach this, time is of the essence here. And it does not, by taking this action, this does not mean we are rejecting or accepting the current interim superintendent. What it means is, we're embarking on a process that says the board is going to take seriously its responsibility to be transparent about how it chooses its leadership. And for that reason, I support this, knowing that the outcome may be the status quo. But at the same time, I think it provides us the opportunity to have a good discussion, a good thought process, and an opportunity to demonstrate that we're willing to do this in an open and transparent manner. So therefore, I support it.
Any other comments?
And Mr. Cloy?
It's not that, it's not that I do not agree.
that he gave us. We're still within December. And to go forward without a... with a vote, and people like myself still have questions, I think is ludicrous, because I'm not... There are questions that I have. And 15 minutes of discussion is definitely not enough discussion, as far as I'm concerned, to make a decision of this magnitude. And I personally will not be rushed into something if I don't agree with it. So as of right now, I'm still standing by what I say. Thank you.
Any other comments? Okay, I'll just keep my opinions to myself. Would you please call the row?
Mrs. Weller?
Aye.
I'm sorry. This is for...
The search. The search.
For them to do the search, yes. The original motion.
No, the original motion was tabled.
This is the main.
This is the main motion.
The main motion, that number 10.
Mrs. Butler?
Aye.
Mr. Chloe?
Aye.
Mrs. Coste?
Aye.
Mrs. Jackson?
Nay.
Mrs. Wolf-Meyer?
Aye.
Mr. Adler?
Aye.
Mrs. Ross?
Nay. Thank you. Next on the agenda is the suspension reviews. And we can just go from suspension reviews to expulsions to... It's usually just the deliberation agenda, but tonight we just had one extra thing. Are you reading, Mr. Adler?
I'll get it, yeah. Number 11 on the deliberation agenda is the suspension review. The proposed action is that the suspension review listed on the date report, or on the report dated November 9, 2015, be approved as presented.
Ms. Call the row?
Ms. Matt. Mrs. Weller?
Aye.
Mr. Chloe?
Aye.
Mrs. Coste?
Aye.
Mrs. Jackson?
Aye.
Mrs. Wolf-Meyer?
Aye.
Mr. Adler?
Aye.
Mrs. Ross?
Aye.
Item number 12 is the expulsion review. The proposed action is that the expulsion review listed on the report dated November 9, 2015, be approved as presented.
Mrs. Butler?
Aye.
Mr. Chloe?
Aye.
Mrs. Coste?
Aye.
Mrs. Jackson?
Aye.
Mrs. Wolf-Meyer?
Aye.
Mr. Adler?
Aye.
Mrs. Ross?
Aye.
Item number 13 is expulsions. The proposed action is the expulsions listed on the report dated November 9, 2015, be approved as presented.
Mrs. Butler?
Aye.
Mr. Chloe?
Aye.
Mrs. Coste?
Aye.
Mrs. Jackson?
Aye.
Mrs. Wolf-Meyer?
Aye.
Mr. Adler?
Aye.
Mrs. Ross?
Aye.
Item number 14 is the expulsions with the expulsions to be held in abeyance. Related to this motion, one of the items the board is being asked to approve this evening is to change a previous board action from expulsion to expulsion in abeyance. This is being done as part of a settlement of a lawsuit filed by a student challenging his or her expulsion by board action on October 26, 2015. Under the settlement agreement, the student will attend Woodruff, and if the student successfully abides by the terms of a separate behavior contract and makes up missed credits by the end of the school year, he or she will be allowed to walk for graduation at his or her home school. By this action, the board is also approving the terms of the settlement agreement, and the lawsuit has also already been dismissed. So the proposed action is that the expulsion with the expulsions held in abeyance listed on the report dated November 9, 2015, be approved as presented.
Mrs. Butler?
Aye.
Mr. Chloe?
Aye.
Mrs. Coste?
Aye.
Mrs. Jackson?
Aye.
Mrs. Wolf-Meyer?
Aye.
Mr. Adler?
Aye.
Mrs. Ross?
Aye.
Item 16 is the revocation of board probation. The proposed action is the revocation of board probation listed on the report dated November 9, 2015, be approved as presented.
Mrs. Butler?
Aye.
Mr. Chloe?
Aye.
Mrs. Coste?
Aye.
Mrs. Jackson?
Aye.
Mrs. Wolf-Meyer?
Aye.
Mr. Adler?
Aye.
Mrs. Ross?
Aye.
Thank you. That's the end of your report.
Yep.
Presentations and suggestions by board members. I have presentations and suggestions by board members.
Yeah, they do.
Yes, we do.
No, apologies.
I don't think we did number 16.
Yeah. Oh, you did.
I think I did 16 and maybe not 15. Is that possible?
Okay.
Apologies. Item 15 is the revocation of expulsions held in abeyance. The proposed action is the revocation of expulsions held in abeyance listed on the report dated November 9, 2015, be approved as presented.
Mrs. Butler?
Aye.
Mr. Chloe?
Aye.
Mrs. Coste?
Aye.
Mrs. Jackson?
Aye.
Mrs. Wolf-Meyer?
Aye.
Mr. Adler?
Aye.
Mrs. Ross?
Aye.
Do 16. Anything else?
Yeah, can we just, just so we're crystal clear on this, can you do 16 again? Because I think you missed 16. All right, well, I disagree, but I'll do it again anyways.
I think you did 16.
You know, it's really late.
At least I think you said 16, maybe you read the other one.
Item 16 is the revocation of board probation. The proposed action is that the revocation of board probation listed on the report dated November 9, 2015, be approved as presented.
Mrs. Butler?
Aye.
Mr. Chloe?
Aye.
Mrs. Coste?
Aye.
Mrs. Jackson?
Aye.
Mrs. Wolf-Meyer?
Aye.
Mr. Adler?
Aye.
Mrs. Ross?
Thank you.
Anything else?
Yes.
Suggestions by the board?
Under suggestions for board members, um...
Or suggestions by?
By board members, yeah.
Yes, if you have any.
Yes. Last Saturday, District 150 teacher Mike Lawless was recognized as he was given the Image Award by the Sigma Gamma Row Sorority, and it was an emphasis on college education and scholarships. Mr. Lawless, his presentation, I feel, is something that the rest of the board members here and those who are present from the public. So I would like to make the suggestion that at some time, Mr. Lawless be asked to come and share those... You were there, Dr. Carr.
Yes, I'll do that. Great idea.
Yeah, he was excellent. And then second, for the board members going to the Illinois State Conference, would suggest, would like to hear your reports, maybe by on December 14, of the workshops and the things that you're bringing back to the district. Just a suggestion.
Well, I think that they could probably decide when they want to report back, and I've set a date at this time. Did you have something?
Yes, I did, Madam President. It came to my attention that we had a number of students that had to be withheld from school, which typically happens because of their lacking a school physical. And I talked or had a correspondence with Dr. Carr about this, and she provided this information. In 2012, we had 532 students that were excluded because of the lack of physicals. In 2013, there were 966, and apparently the requirements changed so that there was a spike in that number. In 2014, we had 689 students that were excluded. And in 2015, we had 501. And although that's substantially better than it has been in the prior two years, that's still 501 students that were not in class. And I would hope that we could find some way through either the clinics that we have with Unity Point Methodist or other organizations in the community, we could find a way to make sure that these are done before we have to exclude students next year, simply because there's no reason for a student who is, for all intents and purposes, capable and willing and in school to be held out because of the lack of physicals. So whatever it takes to get that done, I would... It would be great if we could find some way to reduce that number in next year.
And I will tell you, I know the staff, the health department, the clinics work very... And for years, it used to be, we would have over 1,000 that would be kept out. But I know they all work diligently and work very hard, but you got to get the kids to the places to do it, so.
And I've asked to describe it for lower numbers, but...
Yeah, well...
It's not like we are... I'm sure it's not like staff has not been working on that.
Oh, I don't doubt that for a moment. My concern is that there's 500 kids that lost how many days of school because they didn't have a physical.
Right.
And that just... It's bad enough when we have them out of school for other reasons, but because of this, this is entirely foreseeable and preventable.
Yeah, we agree. And I asked Maureen, Mrs. Langhoff, to share some information in terms of the efforts. We started off with actually high numbers, as Mrs. Wolf-Meyer mentioned, and we've gotten it down, and it's still very, very high. I was disappointed. I'm still disappointed in those numbers.
And there's also... Good evening. It's like almost midnight. I'm kind of tired. No, the nurses have worked very hard. I agree. I don't want... None of us want kids out of school. Sometimes the parents don't have the means. It is. We work very hard. We've had some students refer to Project Target. We... I was on the phone with nurses trying to get kids down to the clinics, but even with the clinic, they still had to have consent for the clinic to see them. So there's many different details involved. If you ask the nurses, they would like to go back to first-day compliance. That may help, but then we have students who aren't with us the first couple of weeks of school. So, you know, I'm open to discussion. I'm open to... You know, I will all follow the direction that I'm given. Yeah, I don't like the number 66 either, that they're out now. It's definitely a challenge. So the nurses are working hard. They're making phone calls, contacts, and we're doing as much as we can. But we'll continue working to get that, you know, number to zero.
Thank you.
Mr. Adler?
I really don't want to keep this any longer. I did want to bring up that the City of Peoria has begun its budget process, of which they're dealing with a number of, let's say, not the same, but similar kinds of issues on the revenue front that we are likely to see in terms of the state. And one of the things that they're doing to try to remedy that is a quarter cent sales tax increase. It's been brought to my attention that the city could, of its own home rule authority, include us in on something similar. And I know that Dr. Carr and district staff have started the conversation there. Since we're talking about strategic plan and finance next meeting, I think it would be, if there's a good update to provide at that point. But I know that there's at least some receptivity within the council to go after that. So I think, you know, the kind of the vision is that we're all in this together, and that if the city solves its budget problem and we don't get anywhere, then I don't know how much ground we've made. So appreciate the diligence there.
It's good that you have the insight or inside story, because Dr. Carr, Mr. Chloe, Mr. Bush, and myself have been meeting with the City of Peoria monthly. And this issue has been risen and died and revived again. And we're waiting now for the financial people to put their heads together so that we can schedule a joint meeting between the City of Peoria and the school district. At least that's the last I heard. You know, sometimes I'm out of the loop, but that's what I heard. Is that correct?
Yes.
I don't have a suggestion, but I do have sort of a presentation. I'd like to... I brought back, for those of you who were not at the Tern Conference, I have just the ones that weren't here. We have ours. Ms. Jackson and I have ours.
Oh, okay, okay, sir.
And so what I brought back for you was some reading, you know, bedside reading, or whatever you want to call it. But I want to say that I thoroughly enjoyed meeting with, actually seeing Dr. Dolan again, who actually coordinated our strategic plan years ago and have worked with us with, through CEC for years, and trying to actually get the board, the union leadership in the management, all on the same level, which sometimes I think that's going to be impossible. But I think from this, just the mere fact that we were all in this together, we, you know, all on the same level, we need to be trying to build trust and build relationships with all segments if we truly have the kids at the forefront, the education of the children. It will happen, otherwise it will not happen, as it has not happened over the years. So I have, you know, some... If you... I have a suggestion that we set up some type of think tank that includes all those people, not just only the people that, at the teacher level, the management level, the administration level, and the board level, but also the student level and that, so that we can kind of constantly collaborate and communicate with each other and see if we're all on the same page. We might be surprised that we are all thinking the same way, if we're in it for the right reasons. So it's my first time in 14 years really sitting down on the same level with everybody.
I would agree. The only way we can get this done is all of us work together. And the important thing is to take care of our children. So bringing the union, the teachers, the board members together to solve this issue and work through this, all the problems and issues we have. That's the only way to do it. So I'm hoping that that's something we can do. That was one of the best conferences I've ever gone to for years. So I'm hoping that we will take a lot of this in mind and know that we are not the only ones that knows what to do. We have to bring everybody together to do it.
You know, there's something about going to... I mean, everybody is, can think the way they want to think, but going to trainings and that really kind of... And you learn more from the people that you're with than you do from the presentation. So while I think, okay, it's okay to come back and do a presentation, but how did you internalize that, to make it a part of what you do? Or, you know, you choose a little bit from here and a little bit from there, and try to make it, you know, work for every, for the core business that we do, which is to educate children again. So... But anyway, if you have any questions, I'm sure Ms. Jackson or I or Lana, she's already gone, but there are some teachers there. And Dr. Bell, still awake? All right. So that's all I have on that issue. Anybody have anything else they want to add? If not... Oh, Ms. Coste, she actually stayed here tonight, so she could give you why we're here.
Why we are here. We are here to set the goals of the district, to hire a superintendent, to allow him or her to do their job, and to monitor the process. And again, these are only a few of the reasons that we are here. Thank you.
Thank you. I will entertain a motion to adjourn.